Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 1st, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting. We're going to open the meeting, but then we're going to go into a closed executive session, and then reconvene at 7:00 in open session. So I'll accept a motion to move into executive session.
I'll make a motion to move into executive session.
We have to have, you have to actually read why we're going into executive session.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Yeah. You can do it on this one. Do it right from there.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions regarding collective bargaining negotiations with the Foxborough Police Union and reconvene in open session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have to do a roll call vote.
Chris, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Ted, yes.
Can't hear you.
Leah?
I think she's saying it, we just can't hear it. Leah, give us a thumbs up.
Ever put a hand up?
No.
She can't see me, right?
No.
Leah, can you hear us?
Can you turn it around, Bill?
Leah, can you hear us?
Can't hear you.
Ever give us a thumbs up?
Is your microphone on? Is your microphone on?
We can't hear you.
Can't hear you. Can't hear you, is your microphone on? She's doing her phone.
Your microphone and speaker, is that hers or ours?
Oh, it's, uh, please, Susan.
There we go.
Well, we're still going to go into executive session. So we'll go into executive session, and we'll see everybody back at 7:00. All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 1st, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting. I think in honor of the Army-Navy game this weekend, I'm going to have Chris lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Army. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think another guy at the table that would differ with you on that.
Yeah, well, in the sake of being fair, Mike did lead us two weeks ago. Being the Navy guy.
He's the Navy guy, by the way.
I think that game's next weekend, though.
I thought it was this weekend.
I think it's next weekend.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Anybody here for citizens input? All right, seeing none, I'm going to sneak up an agenda item on 8:55, the Foxborough Police Department Agreement Memorandum of Agreement for the Union. So we don't have Chief Grace have to come back two hours from now, we're going to push that vote up to now. Be toward the bottom.
Number 11.
11, I'm sorry, here we go. Okay, I'd like to make a motion for, to take a vote on the new contract with the Police Officers Union. Is that right?
Yep.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, Mike. That's it, now you don't have to come back.
Right. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first of all, I want to wish everybody and hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. The challenge with Thanksgiving this year, as we all know, is because we were in an environment where close contact was considered almost dangerous in many ways, with most of people having very limited opportunity to connect with their families and friends during the Thanksgiving Day holiday. That said, we thought we were actually in a good place with our numbers in Foxborough. Just a few days ago, over the weekend, our numbers were down to about 43 cases. Yesterday, they jumped up to 53 cases, and today they jumped to 63 cases. So we've seen two 10-day spikes in a row. So that's a little concerning, and if I think 63 is the new high-water mark, it was, we hit that number last week, so it's tied with the high-water mark in terms of number of active cases in Foxborough. I think some of the numbers may have been distorted, of course, too, because of the fact that there was a little delay in getting results back because of the holiday weekend. So, but I just wanted to, again, to extend to everyone listening to please abide by the rules that have been set by the state and throughout the entire country, actually, to wear masks, wear the appropriate, wash your hands, do the, and keep the appropriate safe distances with everyone, try and limit your interaction with friends and family that you haven't seen in quite some time. Use, obviously, the technology the best we can to try and connect with people, and we'll do the best thing we can to try and get through this. The good news, of course, is the fact that we are seeing, you know, a lot of positive breakthroughs on the vaccine side. Our department here, our Fire Department and Health Department have been working closely together to try and coordinate vaccination efforts here in Foxborough, and we're having conversations now about how we might deploy vaccinations here, and what that would look like. We have the ability here with our Police Department, our Fire Department, rather, to actually provide vaccinations in this community, and some towns do not have that, but we are far more advanced in some of these areas to be able to do that. So it's good to know that we have the capability, we just need the vaccination itself. We do not have it at this point in time, but we hopefully will be getting it relatively soon. Some indicate that we may see that by the end of December, but we may actually see it closer to January, and as soon as we do, we'll have to, obviously, determine what's the best course of action, who gets it first, that type of thing, and we'll get that direction, most likely from the federal and state, on the state side of government, to see what we have to do at that point. But having said that, again, the good news on the numbers that I've seen on our dashboard in Foxborough is that we do not have any hospitalizations at this point. So there are zero hospitalizations, that's really positive news, and so the cases that we do have are not ones that have required any further serious medical attention, so we're glad to see that, and we hope that it stays that way over the course of the next several weeks. This is the holiday season, so again, we encourage everyone to take extra precautions, given the circumstance that we're under right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill. Tatterly, but we'll move on, under the Historic Commission, we have two new appointments, Patricia Selby and William Lloyd. So whoever's making the presentation, come on up, and we'll have Ms. Selby and...
Yeah, my name's Tom Kraus, I'm the chairman of the Historic District Commission, which is Baker Street.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, a little bit different.
Yep.
So we've had, a number of people have moved that were on the commission before, and there's been a lot of changeover in the Historic District. We've had about five homes recently have been sold after quite a long stagnation period, and even today, we had a closing. And it's concerning, this one, because the developer is picking up 18 Baker Street and a lot behind. They've said in a planning board meeting that it could support a five-family home, which, you know, and they're also talking about trying to shoehorn a duplex behind, you know, right behind that, takes some of the property that's in this historic district to make the lot bigger, so it could be that sometime in the future, we'll have to get the town council involved to defend this historic district, we'll just see how that goes. But anyway, the commission is short of two people, and that's why we've nominated Trish and Bill, who are on, in the Historic District, and have been pretty active in trying to keep up with things.
Right. And Trish, come on up, Bill, come on up. Trish, I know in our board packet, we have your application. Unfortunately, we don't have Bill's, so you might have to speak on yourself, about yourself for a little bit.
Sure.
If you would, please.
Okay, well, majority of my life, I've lived in Foxborough. I grew up on Granite Street, I currently live at 29 Baker Street. I have a passion, I'm a Foxborough High School graduate, class of '97, went to Montworth, I have an engineering degree, and I'm just, you know, very interested in preserving the history of the town, and I was pleased with the opportunity, the chance to be on the commission.
And you've served in the Army as well.
Yes, I am an Iraq and Afghanistan War veteran, with over 10 years in the military, and currently serve in the Army Reserve right now.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your support.
I'm Trish Selby, I live at 13 Baker Street. I think of myself as the newbie on the block, but I guess we'll have a few, we have a couple new ones, because Mr. Othlet's house sold a couple months ago, right next to the Doolittle House. I live next to the Krauses', and I own several historic homes, actually, one here, one in France, and one in California. I don't discriminate on century or era, so they're each a different century, and they all come with their own strange quirks and difficulties, but I seem to be a glutton for punishment, so we just put in new heat pump systems today to actually try to heat and cool that lovely beast of a house. So I'm, my background, I'm an attorney, practiced in Oregon for over 20 years before we moved out here, my husband took a position with Wayfair, and our, two of our three children go to Foxborough High School, and our son goes in Oregon, still where his mother is, but he's with us from, we did the university model for COVID, so he came to us for Thanksgiving, just before Thanksgiving, he'll stay with us through the holidays. And we tested, and we'll test both directions, but it seems the safest, I know Tom's daughter is home for that same sort of stint, because most of the universities are trying to keep the movement back and forth as little as possible.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No.
More than highly qualified.
Yeah.
And you live on Baker Street. All right.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve Trish Selby and William Lloyd to the Historic District Commission for a term to end 5/1/23.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for volunteering.
Thank you.
All right, got something similar with the Boydun Library, a new trustee appointment.
Good evening, I'm Colin Ernst, Chair of the Boydun Library Board of Trustees. As I believe you're aware, we've had a vacancy on our Board of Trustees since the election this spring, and certainly the complexities of the pandemic have made filling that seat a little more challenging. We're delighted to have Joyce Parlopiano with us today, who we've been in discussions with over the weeks and weeks.
Yes, yes.
Regarding the role, and delighted to present her as a candidate for that role to fill out this year until the spring, and then for a revote, as I understand, but delighted to present Joyce for a vote tonight. I'll give just a bit of background, and ask Joyce to give a little more detail, 30-year resident of Foxborough, entrepreneur, business leader, and most importantly, someone passionate about the Boydun Library, but Joyce, do I want to give a bit more background?
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, would you mind just calling your meeting to order?
Well, I'm sorry, yes, we do that.
Okay.
So call our Boydun Trustee meeting to order.
A second?
Oh, a second.
Awesome, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Hi, yes, my husband and I moved here in 1990, and we, our son has, had graduated in 2001 from Foxborough High School, so we were lucky.
Just speak into the microphone.
Oh, yes, of course. Is this better?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I have been very involved with the arts and music in particular, and to me, so much of the support comes from reading and becoming informed, so I just thought it was a natural opportunity to get involved and see what I can do to help out with the board for the time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
No.
All right.
So I think you guys are going to make your motion first.
Okay.
And approve her, and then we'll make a motion to accept.
That's right.
So motion to approve Joyce Parlopiano as the Boydun Board of Trustees nominee for the vacant seat?
All in favor?
A second.
A second, sorry.
A second by Mr. Penders.
Okay, now, the Board of Selectmen would like to make a motion to appoint Joyce Parlopiano, did I get that right?
You did.
Yeah, that's great.
To the Boydun Library Board of Trustees for a term to end 5/1/23.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you very much.
I paid attention to how Colin said her name.
Congratulations.
Yeah, you have to adjourn.
We appoint her for the remainder of the term, we only appoint her until the spring.
Yeah, I heard, yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, hold on.
Not for the remainder of the term?
No. Just until the next election?
Yeah.
Until the next election.
All right, so...
Oh, okay, so do we know the date of...
5/1/21.
Five, five...
5/1/21.
5/1/21, right.
So we're going to amend that?
Okay, so motion to appoint Joyce Parlopiano to the Boydun Library Board of Trustees for a term to end 5/1/2021.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for picking that up, I appreciate it, didn't realize.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Motion to adjourn?
The motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
There you go, excellent, thank you.
All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you all.
Is Amy out there?
Come on in.
Mark, you got us right on schedule.
Yeah. Yeah, whoever's speaking, come on up.
You can have a seat right here.
All right, welcome, Amy.
Yes.
Correct, we've talked on the phone, but we waved from a distance to each other.
Yep, from the common.
Yep, so you're on.
All right, my name's Amy Labrash, I'm here from the Foxborough J.C.s. I'm here to support Parker. He came to us about a week ago with a really inspiring project that we're really excited about, and to support him, so I don't know if he wants to talk a little bit about it.
Would you like to talk about it?
Yeah.
All right, here, let's do this for us, let's get that microphone closer to you. There you go, you're on.
Excellent.
Tell us a little bit about the project.
I would like a wishing tree.
Okay. And how's that going to work?
Um, I don't know. We're going to put a tree on the common. We're going to put a tree on the common.
Okay.
And... For New Year's, for New Year's, he'd like to do a wishing tree for the children at Foxborough, to be able to put their wishes in the balls for the New Year. Yeah. Yeah, and we have purchased, the J.C.s ourselves have purchased the balls, Seasonal has donated the lights, and we'll put an artificial tree up there, right next to the bandstand, so there'll be no cords or anything in our way, and it'll be secured, so there won't be any issues with wind. Yesterday was, I just think about stuff like that. And, you know, kids have had a hard time this year, like everybody else, and the J.C.s were about supporting young people like Parker, and bringing inspiring projects to young people into our community, so...
Now, how would it work? What would a child do?
So what we're asking is that the child actually comes with their own index card, that they will roll up into the bulb that's already on the tree. It's not going to be an event where there's going to be people gathered or anything like that, it'll be over a week's time. What we'll do with the bulbs afterwards is we will take them ourselves, we'll put them in storage, and we have a yearly, annual children's New Year's Eve party that we do, we do the Doolittle Home, and the Orpheum, and things like that, so we'd like to bring them back out to the kids who put them on the tree that year, well, the year prior, so that they can open them up and see if they came true, and then do it again the next year. Maybe not with the tree, because, well, maybe with the tree, we'll see.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
But it came from a six-year-old little boy, so...
Even better.
Yep.
Exactly. So Amy, how would, so you said, will they come up on their own?
On their own.
So will there be any way to control that, you know, you don't have 40 people showing up, you know, I mean, is there going to be any, any organization of the placing of the wishes inside?
We were thinking of, we were thinking of having it over a week's time.
Yep.
Hoping that people, obviously, will keep their distance, and it's a long enough time that that shouldn't be an issue.
Yep.
But, I mean, that's something we would definitely consider, if that's something that is on your minds.
Yep, well, not a deal break, I was just curious, I mean, chances are, if you have it spread over, you know, and I think, especially after Bill just discussing what's going on with numbers, that people would be respectful, you know, just like we do in the store, be respectful of not, you know, keeping your distance, and after somebody's done, the next person will pop up.
Yeah, and then we'll also periodically check to make sure that everything's secure as far as the bulbs and stuff like that, so that they're not blowing around the common or anything like that. I know I drive around it several times a day, as well as that could be a job that Sarah or Parker could do. This is Sarah, my daughter, and she's helping in the project as well.
So you were just a little, little, even littler than you are now, just a little type. Well, bravo, Parker, what a, what a great idea from, I think you're a pretty special little guy to come up with something, especially with everything that's been going on this year. Yeah.
So is I have a question for Parker, were you Batman at Halloween this year?
Yeah.
Yeah. The mask was a dead giveaway.
What timeframe are you thinking, what week have you thought of?
I probably put the tree up a day or two before Christmas, and it would definitely be coming down when we take down all of the other holiday lights, so that would be the weekend after, weather permitting, of New Year's.
And who are you sort of going to market this to? Is it the elementary schools, the PTOs?
Children, and PTOs, I mean, we could definitely put something out, but I think it's something that he's actually making his own flyer that will be posting on social media, and be able to get the word out that way.
Any other questions?
Maybe you guys, you know, I know usually this time of year, the recreation department is teaming up with the J.C.s for the tree lighting, maybe you guys could reach out to Deb, and maybe she could put it on her, you know, on her blast of kids participate, too, that's...
That'd be awesome, yeah.
Get out to a lot of kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, Parker, Sarah, thanks for everything you guys do, I see a couple of future J.C.s sitting there.
Yeah, we actually are starting a junior chapter, so we'll be starting them, we'll be starting them young.
I know who will be president.
Yeah, it'll be, starting, starting.
Go, Sarah.
Girl power, right?
Yeah.
That's great, any other questions?
No.
I don't have any. Leah?
Leah?
No, Amy and I talked beforehand over email, so I'm clear and good.
Okay, great. Do we have to make a motion to approve the use of the...
Yeah, I think so, it'd be good.
Okay. Motion to approve the wishing tree project for the common from December 21st, 2020, to January 3rd, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, great job.
Congratulations.
Could you maybe think about maybe coming back to us in January and letting us know how it went?
Yeah.
What do you think?
That'd be awesome.
That would be great, how many people came, how, that would be super.
Give you a little report.
Yeah.
Tell us what you got for Christmas, too.
So we could all be jealous. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm not lying out. All righty, in keeping with our department head updates, tonight we've got Mark Craig from Council on Aging and Human Services.
Hello, I feel underdressed, Parker wore a tie and I don't have one, so, that was great, that was really, really great.
You really got a boring, black...
Yeah, I know, I feel bad, nice little red tie, you look really good. No Batman mask for me, though. So hello, for those who, I know you all know me, but for those who are at home, my name is Mark Craig, I am the Director of Human Services for the Town of Foxborough. I have been here for a little over two years, it feels like it's gone like that.
And that one, that showed that one already, really?
Before that, I was the Director of Community Programs for the Town of Randolph, where I oversaw the Rec Department, Elder Affairs, and the Community Center, and I say that because I definitely have an approach to the senior center that is a little bit somewhat unique compared to most communities. For me, it's more about the culture of the building, the culture of the space that really draws people in, and the overall hope is to bring more and more people into the senior center, and with it being senior and human services, we do have younger people in the space, too, so that is sort of my little introduction. Tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit, I'm going to give a brief department overview for those who are sitting at home that don't really know what happens down at 75 Central Street, also going to talk about the operations during this crazy, crazy, crazy time that we're living in, where I get to wear a mask in a presentation, you can't see me smile the entire time, so, and then I'm going to look towards the future. So for department overview, I am blessed by having an incredible, incredible staff down at the senior center. There's Elaine, Pam, Chris, Christina, Karen, Gary, Tracy, and a new person, Mike Kaminsky is our new building custodian, this is his first week. Combined overall experience, we have over 75 years of working at that senior center, even though the building has only been there for 20 years. We've got some long haulers, we've got people that have been there 20-plus years, people that have been there 15-plus, and then the new ones are myself, Tracy, and Christina. We also have two social work interns, Vicky and Jessie, who have been with us since September, they've been great, they've been really helping out. The caseloads, as you can imagine, this year for social workers is immense, and having two interns is incredibly, incredibly helpful. Additionally, we have 30-plus subcontractor program coordinators, these are the people that boots on the ground, those are the people that are running our programs, and my model has always been a subcontractor-type base, which I'll get into later, but it's similar to what recreation departments have been doing for many, many years. We also have 11 front-desk senior tax workers. This is something that we've done for many, many years using the senior tax program, but they're our front-desk greeters, and when we came back, we tried to find a way to keep them in the space, because we, as if you've been to the senior center, it's tight, so we actually added a second front desk, just so we could have that smiling greeting, smiling behind-the-mask greeting when people walked in the senior center. So the senior center is comprised, as I said before, of two separate but equal departments, Council on Aging and Human Services, and Human Services is something that a lot of people don't know about until they need it. Human Services is a great way for people to get the resources that they need, it's anyone 18 or older, we have a lot of younger people, especially now, coming into the building, needing help with fuel assistance, using help with housing certifications, and then we have some older people coming, whether it's a memory cafe or low-vision support group, it's just a great way to get resources, and this is something that most communities don't have. Most towns are lucky to have one part-time outreach worker working at the senior center, and Foxborough is truly blessed to have two social workers, master's degree social workers, in the building every day, helping out with problems, and this is the time where we get to shine, Foxborough shines above most communities, where it was never anticipated that we would need this kind of coverage that we have now, and as I said before, their caseloads are straight out at this point. We also do senior programs, we do a lot of senior programs, so in the last couple of years, we've, as you can see here, here's an extensive list, and that's just A through C, so at last count, we were over 200-plus unique programs. Some things happen every single week, we have chair yoga every single Monday, but a lot of, we have a lot of unique programs that happen throughout the year. Obviously, this year has been a challenge, but these are the things that have been going on since I came in the end of 2018. Okay, so we also have transportation, you probably have seen the van go drive through town, you've also seen the Ford Taurus that you might think is a police car, it's not a police car, you don't have to slow down, you don't have to tap the brakes when you see Karen drive by, so the car and the van are driving around town 35 hours a week each, and they're taking seniors or human services clients around the community to doctor's appointments, to get their hair done, to come to the senior center, and another great resource is free, so if there's anyone at home that needs a ride, it's a 508-543-1234 number, we have availability, especially now, we've sort of modified our vehicles to make them COVID-safe at this point. We have our car, which you have a picture of here, our van... Um, we have our car, which you have a picture of here. Our van, um, just so happens to have had a transmission problem, which is okay, because I know, as Bill said a few weeks ago, we have a new van on order coming by the end of the year, thankfully due to CARES Act funds. So really excited about that. It's a fourteen-passenger handicap accessible van, which is something that Town of Foxborough has never had before. So the ability to take people in wheelchair, take, take people with mobility issues, um, in and around the community. Um, it's something that I've been hoping for ever since I got here and I'm really, really excited to see it be delivered to town. So we should have that up by the end of this, uh, current year. So within a month. So I'm really excited about that. Um, so operations during COVID, um, it's been challenging. So our doors, like most town, most town departments, closed on March thirteenth. Um, and we immediately picked right up the following Monday with wellness checks. So we kind of figured something was coming down the pike. Um, we printed off the most, six hundred most unique people that have come to the senior center. I assigned every one of my staff members eighty people to start calling. So these wellness checks happened the moment that we closed our doors, just calling seniors, calling human services clients just to check in. What started as what we thought for just a couple of weeks and make a couple of phone calls and that's it, uh, turned into many, many months of phone calls and relationships developed. It was a great way for some of my staff members who might kind of just sit behind a keyboard and that's really what they, they did. Now they're more in the community. They're talking to seniors that they've seen for years and years come through the building, but never really developed a relationship with. Um, so while they were working remotely, they still were in contact with seniors. So if a senior and, and one of the staff members were talking and realized that there was a problem, we could then refer that person to the social workers and then that problem could be solved immediately rather than waiting for weeks. So the other thing that we did, we started virtual programs, um, the moment we closed, we've actually sent out a, a bingo card to, um, several hundred seniors in the community so we could do virtual bingo. I did every single day for a few weeks and then a couple of times a week, virtual bingo from my office where it was either conference call or Facebook Live was really successful and we actually got the craft organization involved. We had cheerleaders, we had players. Um, we had pretty much every sort of organization up at Gillette, we had represented by our virtual bingo. So it was a lot of fun. It meant I get to take a little bit of a break one day, a week. Um, we also did a community needs assessment. So I sent out several surveys through Facebook, through email blast to try and figure out those early stages when no one knew what was going on, what people needed. The good thing is, the results that came back is people were okay at the time. They were just worried about the future, as we still are. Um, we also started working on a community resource guide. So it's something that hadn't been updated in several, several years to try and get into sort of our format. So it's a twenty-page guide that's throughout the town. Uh, we have a lot down at the senior center and it's basically every single resource that's available in our community for the residents of Foxborough, anything that they need, whether it's, uh, SNAP assistance, senior care, SSI, you can turn the page and just find a quick description, the phone number, the contact information. So this took some serious time to update, but we had people working remotely, so they were able to do that from their homes. Uh, we also started our drive-throughs. We did a lot of drive-throughs, several thousands of pounds of, of vegetables handed out from, uh, at the senior center that was donated through mass military support. I would go up, load the entire van up, bring it down to the senior center and then start loading hundreds of seniors and, and human services clients' drive-through, pick up some bags of groceries and be on their way. Um, our staff returned in June and then the senior center reopened in July. And to do that, had to put together a comprehensive but easy-to-read guide to let seniors know that changes that had, had happened at the senior center. Seniors are the most vulnerable population, especially during COVID, so I wanted to make people feel that they, the, the building was safe. I had several rolls of duct tape lining the floor, arrows everywhere, squares, uh, even for staff, outline everyone's desk. Um, make sure that those that were interested in coming back for this, this weird short time, that they felt comfortable. Um, we have to constantly remind people, you know, masks on, um, but also we moved a lot of our programs outside. We got, we were able to purchase a tent, um, that initially came from the Friends of the Foxborough Seniors and the Disability Commission. And then it turned out that that money was going to come back to us from the CARES Act, so we were able to get a large tent that programs were held outside. Way to do little things like get rid of the coffee and donuts that for years people would come just to get a coffee and donut. So it's, you know, that's a part of that culture change that we had to do at the time, that I look forward to the day when we can have donuts from Honeydew Donuts again. Um, how are we doing? Uh, okay. I mean, seriously, I mean, we're like everyone else. It's kind of just okay. Um, very ready for this to be over, as every single person who's watching on TV who's in this room is ready for this to be over. Uh, but in the meantime, we're doing okay. Um, I, one thing I did was, like I said, tape outline, uh, for our program rooms. So when we had to move programs inside, I hesitated. I waited until October sixteenth, waited till it got down to about forty degrees and I said, okay, we're moving inside. But these taped outlines are there for weeks, so as seniors are walking by, they could see, okay. So when we do come inside, am I going to feel comfortable moving indoors? So a room that has held a hundred and ten, and one program that I was here about a year and a half ago, now holds fourteen. Um, seniors, anyone who's participating in a program is at the very minimum seven feet apart. Most of the time it's ten feet apart. And you can see that everything, when people are doing their, their chair yoga, they're in their chairs, they're in their squares. Uh, if they're doing line dancing, they're still in the square. So it's something that I'm really cognizant of. Lost a lot of sleep over trying to make sure that all of these things are, are there, they're ready for people and people can see them and then also feel comfortable. So since July, we've had six hundred and twenty-three people, uh, visit, which is great. Either really, really great or really, really scary. I don't know which. We'll see in the spring which way that's going to be. Um, and our program, so this is our December calendar, um, is pretty comparable to last December. We have pretty much the same amount of programs. Just our total capacity is way, way down because of our, of our guidelines. Our unique monthly check-ins are our way down in our average daily attendance is actually not bad compared to where we've been in the past. But we're actually beating some months from two thousand fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. Um, and it's actually right around where I came in, in two thousand eighteen, kind of around the same, same daily attendance. Um, and then the biggest thing is looking to the future. Like you, I'm looking forward to this being over. I'm looking forward to the next steps. I'm looking forward to two thousand twenty-one. Uh, so I have some goals that we're working on. Um, one thing that seniors have been asking for many years is, uh, accepting credit cards. Uh, I hope to have two hundred unique programs next year. Uh, we're going to move our, uh, senior Olympics to the fall. That way we can get a little bit further away from where we are now. Um, I'm, I'm very ready to resume our day and overnight trips, probably sometime in the fall. Um, those, that's a great revenue generator for us, for our revolving fund. Uh, hopefully we can increase program capacity. Um, and then the biggest thing is executing a new facility feasibility study. So last, if you'll remember, last November, we had a special town meeting and the town meeting voted for funds to do a feasibility study. Um, so last, right before COVID, we were able to, uh, execute a contract with Bargman Henry Associates and then re-engage them once we kind of got back into the swing of things in September. And they outlined a, a kind of a timeline, which essentially ends with a report to you all sometime in March or April. Um, but we did a survey this past week and it's still live for those who are watching on TV. You can still take that survey. It's on the Town of Foxborough website, but we're able to distribute this through our email blast, the rec department, the library. I also hand-delivered to all Foxborough residents.
Can you go back one slide?
Yeah, of course.
I just wanted to see the, uh, what these things on the left-hand side are.
Sure, so it's.
Research. Good.
So it's, it's a, it's definitely modified. Uh, this is my third feasibility study. It's definitely modified from the past. Normally, for those who have never been involved in a feasibility study before, normally you would have a group of hundreds of people around tables, drawing squares and you'd have a lot of collaboration. We're obviously not going to do that in, in COVID climate. But we were able to get some, um, some serious feedback through surveys through that public comment section.
Okay.
Yeah, so we did through the email blast. I also, um, shared with leaders of a lot of organizations to try and get as many hands as possible, to try and get a wide range of, of the community, um, to try and get as many responses as possible. And so far, as of, um, a little over an hour ago, we had seven hundred and twenty-four results, hopefully representing seven hundred and twenty-four households, which I'm, I'm pretty happy about. Um, and then the final feasibility study will report, uh, report will, to you guys will be in sometime in March or April. Um, there's many steps in between now and then. Um, and I hope I didn't go over my twenty minutes, but how about questions?
I had one on a couple of slides back. So you had, um, one of your goals is to have forty-five senior tax write-off things. So I guess it's a broad-based question. Do we have like a limit? Like, can we only have so many per year? And how does that all work? Or could we have multi, you know, ninety?
I think that I've, I've been kind of under the direction of keep going until we tell you to stop, um, which is a really good position to be in.
Do we get reimbursed by the state or the state gives us a deal or how does that all work, the tax write-off?
No, it's, it would, it would actually comes out of our overlay, you know, so we, what we do is we folk, we pay folks to do, to work their, their time off and then that comes out of their taxes. So there's a limit how much they can actually take write-off.
Right, but is there a limit?
Yeah, it's fifteen hundred dollars, yeah.
Is there a limit of?
It's fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, that's right.
Is there a limit of how many of those people, like, you know, could we have five thousand people doing?
Well, I think we would, we would have to have a conversation about that. So, and we've not had that kind of a draw, obviously. So, um, but the, the answer, the short answer is not necessarily, but I think there are certainly limits to what we can do so we don't run into a financial problem by doing that. So, but I think the, the, the answer that we have right now is that we're very comfortable with the numbers that we see right now.
Yeah, and, and my sort of goal this year is to try and create more unique jobs. As you know, we have someone who's doing, um, the common sign right now. That's something that we've never really thought about in the past. Uh, we have people helping out at the library, counting, um, patrons as they walk through the door. I mean, I think this is the time to try and help the town staff with positions that maybe they don't have the time to do, but can engage them in, in unique opportunities and have seniors work and also help them out a little bit in their taxes as they are hitting that bill every single year. They're trying to worry about where the money comes through. I think it's a great opportunity for, for the seniors of this community. Any other questions?
So maybe to help answer that question on the, on the limit, um, so this, this senior tax program comes under, it's a local option that the town at one time adopted and I have seen some communities put limits on, on these. Uh, most do not. Um, but I will say that, um, you know, both when I worked in veteran services and now working in administration, uh, we've been able to employ people and, um, for a far less cost than it would have, uh, been to either put employees at the front desk here or to, to hire, uh, other folks and same, you know, down when I needed secretarial help before I had, you know, help down there. So, um, but there can be limits put on it, but I think, uh, to this, up to this point, I think it's been advantageous to, to bring people on, give them some benefit and actually leverage, you know, getting more than, than what they're giving. It has been my observation.
I think overall, everything you just went through, it, I can remember, I was on your interview a couple of years ago and, I mean, just what you've been able to do in a couple of years is just amazing. I mean, I, you know, friends of mine that do the chair yoga and stuff, um, they, they just love going there. Um, so great job to you and your entire team down there. You're doing a really good job.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It's definitely coming into an organization that was already established and been established for twenty years is hard. Um, but it feels like day two, everyone is ready and we're all in the same direction and, um, feels like a perfect storm in a good way of, of the staff down there. Everyone's working as hard as they can to try and help as many people as possible, um, which just adds to further to our success.
So Bill and I, we're also on that, uh, that interview, uh, process. And when we came up with our, our finalist, uh, we looked at each other and said, you know, we've, we've got our, our retiring, um, you know, human services and, and Council on Aging Director is, you know, twice this person's age, a female and a social worker. Um, and Mark is, you know, clearly a male of, you know, very young and, uh, and not a social worker. I hope we're doing the right thing and clearly, we were very confident that we, you know, that the, the energy that this guy just, you know, emits is, is what we wanted and, and, and Vicky did a wonderful job. He stepped into a great program and he's made it greater.
I think more impressively is that he's changed the culture of the organization and the, and the, uh, and the entire facility to the point where it's a very welcoming place right now. People feel comfortable going there. And I think probably what's most impressive is that just, uh, the other day I was on a Zoom call with managers from across the state and they were talking about, well, you know, what are you guys doing about, you know, when, when, when are you going to reopen your libraries? And when are you going to reopen your COA facilities? And, and both of ours have been open since June or July, right? So, so I was like, it's impressive that Mark and, and Manny has been doing that as well as the rest of the town have been keeping the town open as best we can to provide services. And, and he did it in a very safe way, very, very limiting way that sort of everybody would remain healthy, uh, throughout the course of this situation. So we, we continue to hold programs. We still go down there and meet every month with, with the seniors and look forward to doing that every month. We didn't miss, we missed one this month because of the holiday, but, but obviously, but we'll get back on it next month. So, but, uh, you're doing a great job, Mark. Keep up the work.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Great. Any other questions? Leah?
No, just, you know, I'm always absolutely blown away, Mark, by your professionalism, your creativity, your enthusiasm. Um, so just thank you for everything that you do for, for the, the seniors and, and everyone else up at the, up at the, um, Council on Aging.
This is great. Anytime I have a bad day, if I could just come up and, and you guys all do this. My ego doesn't feel big enough. I really appreciate it.
This is being taped, so you can go on.
Yeah, just watch it over and over again. That sounds good.
Bad day, just replay the tape, that's all.
And one last thing that wasn't brought up, um, is the jam, is, is the newsletter. What a great newsletter every month that comes out, uh, both paper, if you want to do it, and I know I get it electronically. And it's a great update every month.
Sometimes it's the bane of my existence, but, uh, I, it's, it keeps me organized. It's the thing that I keep coming back to when I have a little bit of downtime. I go back and forth to that, so.
Yeah, great.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and sharing.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, next on the agenda is a change of manager at the Foxborough Country Club. Come on up.
Is this the first time you've been in this room, John?
Uh, no.
No?
Second.
Second? Okay.
So I came up for, uh, pole training with, uh, Bob Cutler.
Oh, okay, fair enough.
That was an experience.
Oh, yeah.
Hi, guys.
Hi, John. So you're going to become the new, um, manager of record?
Yeah, the, the way, uh, I don't, I don't think there's any members here, but, um, Chris Lopa left, oh, about January of last year. And we, um, didn't know that this pandemic was on the horizon, but we made a decision to, uh, not go with the house manager, general manager, um, position, uh, aid to save some money. And secondarily, we had a very active board of governors, uh, very professional board of governors. And we decided that we were going to, um, break up the, uh, the operation of the country club by department and one of the board of governors would run that department. This past year it was Doug Titus. Uh, next year, uh, and probably the year after, I'm going to be running house. So I'll be responsible for all food service operation, liquor service, personnel, training, uh, everything that goes on with the operation of the, of the house. And, uh, Bruce asked me if I would do it and, uh, after I said yes, he said, oh, by the way, uh, we need somebody's name on the liquor license, so I was chosen. But I'm, you know, I, I sat in your seat for three years. Uh, probably seventy-five percent of our work in those three years was liquor licenses, uh, police stings, uh, rules, regulations, responsibilities. So I'm very well-versed in, um, the sort of the, oh, I don't know, call it the responsibilities of managing alcohol and its service.
So one of the questions I had when I saw this first, I was like, well, must be another John Gray that's.
Actually, there's, there's two in town.
So you might have just answered my first question. So I, I originally thought, okay, maybe they're having a hard time getting somebody. So this is like a Band-Aid approach. So this is.
Not at all. No, this is our strategy.
Okay. Um, so what happens in two years when you leave whoever next is on the board of governors?
I won't say that we may not go back to the, um, the general manager, um, position. We may.
Okay.
Uh, but we've actually changed the bylaws so that people can be on the board for more than three years. Uh, this is the end of my first year, so it's likely that I'll stay on, hmm, three, maybe four years. Uh, but I'm, I'm guessing, if I had to guess, I'm going to say we're probably going to go back to the general manager position in a number of years. Uh, once we get through this and once we can find the right person. We've had, uh, three strikeouts with general managers. They just didn't work out. So, and then we were thrilled with the way this past year worked out. I mean, with everything thrown at us, you know, trying to, uh, accommodate the regulations that the state was giving us, uh, we actually had a very good year. And, uh, we attribute that to the fact that our, uh, board of governors, which are members, have pitched in significantly to, uh, run the operation. And the level of professionalism was far and away better than we could have found in a candidate for a general manager. So we're going to stay with that probably for a few years. Um, we may go back to the other, uh, you know, general manager in a few years, but, uh, you know, call it two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two, you'll see me.
Okay, as far as like tip certified, safe serve, all that?
All of our staff is tip certified, I'm tip certified, I went through the roots. It's actually extensive training, it's much better than I thought. And there, you know, we do have some people who come in during the summer and they serve on the patio, and they're all tips trained. Hopefully they come back as they were very good, and then we have our regular staff who's been there for years and very professional, very experienced.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, so, so obviously how you explained how you guys are going to reorganize for now. Now, here's the thing, no disrespect, okay, do you truly have management experience in food service and alcohol service?
I ran a forty million dollar company in medical devices, I was a medical device manufacturer. I was subject to oversight by the FDA, believe me, I follow rules.
Oh, no, no, no.
I've never, I told Bruce, no.
That's not my question, John.
And I'm getting to it, let me finish, I'm getting to it. I've never cooked a meal that somebody else has eaten, and I've never served anyone a drink. So as far as that, no, but as far as management of an enterprise, yes.
Okay, so, again, with due respect, to me, that's not experience. And so, and part of our, you know, which you probably know this already, you know, I kind of asked Christine to, you know, send me what our either bylaws or rules are for the person to be on the liquor license. Now, it says no absentee managers will be allowed. So are you going to be part of the day-to-day?
Yes.
In the bar?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'll be there probably about sixty hours a week.
Okay.
I live across the street and I'm retired.
Perfect.
So this is how we operated this past year. Doug Titus is probably there eighty hours a week. He rebuilt the kitchen by himself, but we're, you know, the membership up there is very active and very engaged. And believe me, we know what's at stake.
Yeah, I've heard lots of great, great things about the club.
The country club was caught up in a sting four or five years ago, and we were closed down for four days. I think that was the penalty back then. We get it, I get it.
Okay.
So I'm not taking this thing lightly.
Okay, yeah, you know, like I said, the question is in due respect. I know you ran a business, I know you're a bright man, but with that being said, this is completely out of the realm of what you did for a living, and like you said, all of a sudden you're just like, oh my God, by the way. So with that, you know, anything that would fall under that, somebody gets pulled over, they say I drank here, it's you that will come before us.
Absolutely.
So that's, I just want to make sure, you know, whether it was you or someone else, it's somebody with true experience of the day-to-day of food and alcohol service. Okay.
Any other questions? No?
Leah, do you have anything?
No, just so for clarification, John, so just, you know, I know Doug was up there, just being up there for Friday night dinners. I don't think I went up a Friday night that he wasn't there, so that's the type of role. You'll be up there, kind of on premises.
Absolutely. I'm the new Doug. Doug is actually going to take care of facilities, so, and he's been doing that anyway, but it's, to be fair, the guy volunteered roughly eighty-plus hours a week of his time to the club since January. And we, it's been, and he's done an incredible job, so we appreciate what he's done and his hard work, and, you know, I'll be, he's still going to be working with me, and the thing is, I'm not doing this alone. But I'm going to take over the focal point for the house and obviously the liquor license.
And then just one more question, maybe more for Bill than for John, but kind of how does this slip through the cracks that someone's gone for a year and a half on an active license that, you know, neither side picks up? So if I heard it correctly, he's been gone for about a year and a half, right? How do we avoid this?
He's been gone since January of last year, of this year, January of this year.
Okay, so, I mean, we're on almost a year, though. How do we, how do we avoid something like this, Bill?
Well, through the first three months, we were just debating which direction we were going to take. Then the pandemic hit, blew everything out of the water, and we'd been basically swimming upstream since then. I can't tell you how it slipped through the cracks, it obviously probably should have been addressed much sooner. It wasn't, but I'm here to fix that.
Yeah, I'd have to say, Leah, that the responsibility is certainly on the manager and the management team to notify us of a change. So I don't think, short of us calling, you know, every three months, who's still the manager? I think that's part of their responsibility.
Yeah, it's responsibility.
I thought it was January of 2019, not, I thought it was a year and a half, so that was my question when it came up for renewal in January, how did we miss it?
It's, the license is renewed every year.
Yeah, it wouldn't go beyond a year because they're required to renew, and the documentation would have come through at that point, we would have picked up on it at that point. But normally, throughout the course of a year, unless we find the problem, it really is incumbent upon the license holder to actually notify the town of a change that's been coming. Otherwise, we would not know under any circumstances.
Yeah, that makes, to piggyback in on Leah's comment, whether it's any other license holder in town or, you know, now that you're going to be taking over, John, I would say that, I mean, technically, you've been illegally operating since January, since he stepped down. There might be a grace period, but you cannot go ten or eleven months without the person who's, I mean, it says right on here that he has to be on premises. So if you guys go to, you know, if you decide that you're going to step down, someone else is going to step in, I would say that then maybe, it's just because you're in front of us, it's an opportunity to say, let us know, and who's going to be the new person, and, because technically, if something had happened since January till now, the person, you know, yeah.
I think partly it was.
Not your fault.
Partly it was a crazy year, but secondarily, they renew this time of year.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if the town sent the renewal paperwork to the office, and that's what started the process.
Yeah.
Possible.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we sent the renewal back in October, so, yeah.
Yeah, I had sent everything out the beginning of October because the ABCC just let all municipalities send out notifications about six weeks earlier than normal years, and then that's when I got the paperwork back with Christopher's name crossed off and John's name, so I had just reached out, letting them know that they do need to go through the formal process of a change of manager through the ABCC and then our local board.
So we did do our due diligence.
Yeah, so I think, I think John knows this, and so obviously, when a change occurs like that, we have to, we certainly have to know about that. But there is a, this is a situation where we're actually taking a secondary step this year, where Katie, when she sends out the licenses, is going to provide a copy of the rules and regulations and advise everybody to reacquaint themselves with the rules and regulations as a license holder, because that's really what we run our organization on, run the town on, based on those light as being, you know, the trustees, sort of less of the holders of the license issuers. So we have to make sure that everybody's familiar with those rules and regs, and it's an important piece of this process. Confine this to the process.
Just a point of clarification on that, too, and I think I either emailed you last night or texted you, the one that, the rules and regulations that are on board docs in the library, the date on it is 2017. The one that was attached for this hearing to us.
We just made that correction.
2012, so I just want to make sure whoever, like John or anybody else is getting, I looked through them and I couldn't find any difference, but.
We just made that correction today, Chris, so we, the one on board docs is the most up-to-date one. We had the, when we looked in the file, it just had the 2012 one, so the 2017 one is the most up-to-date one, and that's the one we're going to issue to everyone.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, Katie, when you sent out the rules and regulations, is there a requirement that the manager of record sign it and send it back? That we have proof that they've read it, the updated version?
We don't at this time that I've found, but that's something that I can, you know, we can put together a document and send that out for a return receipt this year, if you like.
Yeah, we can do it this year because when they come to pick up their license, they can do it at that point.
Yeah, just to make sure they read it.
Right.
And just one more question, Bill, so a volunteer can be on a liquor license, just one hasn't come for me, so, okay, it is fine. And is Tracy still there? She's the bar manager, right?
Absolutely.
Like, if you're ever not there?
If I'm not there, Tracy will be there. Tracy's got to be there a hundred hours a week, I don't know how she does it.
So Leah, in response to your question, I actually did confer with liquor council just to make sure there weren't any legal issues here. This is unique, obviously, it's something that we haven't seen before. So I just want to confer, are we missing anything? Is there anything legal that we should be looking and paying attention to? And he said, no, he said it's all within the rights of the agency itself.
Super.
Yeah, I think because it uses the word manager, obviously we assume employee.
Yeah, you don't have to be an employee, though.
Exactly, so what you're saying is John doesn't have to be compensated. Of course, he's part of the board of, what'd you say?
Board of Governors.
Board of Directors, okay.
Governors.
So, yeah, the Board of Governors, okay.
There is no requirement under the law.
So as long as he's going to be the manager, that's fine. It doesn't have to be that he's an employee, it just has to be the full-time manager.
And the reason why, this is a club license as well, so it's no different, say, with a veterans organization who has a manager, may not always be compensated as well.
So this is an actual club license, not a?
It's a club license, right.
And that's two point of clarification, that's, the ABC says it's fine, but us as the licensing authority, down the road, if we ever wanted to change it, we could.
You could impose different rules and regulations if you so choose.
Yeah.
You do have a little bit more leeway in imposing your own rules and regulations along the way.
Yeah.
All right, Steph, I'll want to take a motion.
Okay. Okay, make a motion to change, make, I'm sorry, one more time. Motion to approve the change of manager for Foxborough Country Club from Christopher Loper to John Gray Jr.
Second.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor? Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, see you guys.
We better not see you in front of us.
Complimentary though.
Oh, actually, John, before you go, also, I think one of the other things that someone had mentioned to me is maybe look into Foxborough Cares. I think a lot of the, either managers or.
Fox cares, yeah.
Fox cares. That's the group of basically just, I guess, good practices, all the license holders.
For some practices.
Yeah, I'll take your.
Yeah, Tom at Tavallino's is who, the general manager at Tavallino's is the last person that I knew was responsible for that.
And that gets promoted by to all the different organizations who hold licenses.
I think Chris actually participated in that, but I'll reinforce that.
I think that's true, I think that's true.
That'll be me.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, John.
All right, DPW National Grid Winter Readiness and Power Outage Presentation, a quick little review.
Mr. Chairman, Ann Mallie is joining Chris tonight, and Chris is in as the National Grid representative for, to Foxborough, and is head of their customer relations, is that the government relations organization? So it's a big organization, it's your money, you're probably not getting sleep last night, did you, or did you?
I finally got to sleep, yeah, yeah. It was a long night, an early morning.
Good news is that we had no power outages here from Foxborough to speak of.
Foxborough lucked up in the storm. Franklin wasn't so lucky, but Foxborough.
Yes, I heard about Franklin, so, that's good news, it wasn't us, so I'm sorry. Turn it over to Chris.
All right, Chris.
So just to touch base a little bit on what the DPW is doing, and then, you know, how we interact with National Grid, and then I'll let Ann talk about what National Grid does on an annual basis, and then what they've done kind of long-term over the last five years to really boost up the system in Foxborough. Obviously, we know we're in that mode where we can see snow at any point in time. You know, usually, early October, we start to get all the trucks ready, make sure the heavy trucks that have, you know, been used limitedly over the summer, you know, start to get gone through by the mechanics so that they're ready to go for the winter, minimize breakdowns. That includes getting all the sanders in the back of the trucks, so most of our trucks have slide-in sanders so they come out for the summer, and then they go back in for the winter so we can put salt in them and use them throughout the winter months. Our salt shed is full, we did have to use some of that just before Halloween, so we have restocked that. So that's full and ready to go. Plows have been looked at, put on trucks, made sure all the hydraulic lines are in good shape, replaced when needed, so our plows are ready to go. And we got a few new employees this year, so we're working on some training now, some movement internally in the DPW and also some new employees coming in from the outside, so making sure that the young guy who's going to be in the sidewalk machine is familiar with the machine, familiar with the route, so that that first snowstorm, they're ready to go, so that kids can walk to school. We've got all our contractors lined up, all our paperwork is back from them. Foxborough is actually in good shape as far as our plow contractors go. If you drive around into all the other towns, you'll see a lot of those towns have their message boards up basically begging for plow contractors. I think part of that is they're loyal, they like plowing in Foxborough. We have some that are local in Foxborough, so if they can plow, you know, across the street from their house, you know, it minimizes their travel time and they like being local. Part of that, too, is the team that we have in the office where we turn around payment as quickly as we can. So as soon as the storm's done, you know, the next day that the office staff is in, they're pulling those time cards, they're looking at the hours that the contractors put in. We're getting those vouchers processed, that payroll processed for our contractors and getting them a check as quickly as we can.
How many contractors do we use?
We have twenty-two pieces of equipment from contractors. So we have, we make eight phone calls, and that gets us twenty-two pieces. So a couple of them give us two trucks at a time, we have one that gives us eight, which is nice to have, too. So we're able to get front-end loaders, backos, and then small trucks as well.
It's a good process, I, back in the day when I owned my company, I, a couple of years in a row, had, I think, one or maybe two of my trucks on. It was good.
So we're, you know, our equipment's ready to go. You know, some of the prep we do leading up to the winter, outside of the equipment, we've been sweeping the streets in town over the last month. What that does is, it's twofold, it meets a stormwater requirement that we have to sweep our streets twice a year. It also gets all the leaf litter off the ground, so anytime we get rain in October, November, December, there's always concern about flooding because the catch basins get clogged, so pine needles and leaves. That stuff just floats and goes to the low point, and then it just clogs the catch basins, and then we end up with ponding on the road. So we're actually back out sweeping again this week, and we'll keep going until the weather tells us we can't anymore. So we're doing that. And then Tree and Park is a big part of going into the winter. So every year, it's cyclical for that department. They get through all the field maintenance, once sports shut down, the grass stops growing, then they move into leaf mode where all the town properties, they're getting the leaves off that, off those properties. So whether it's schools, fields, town buildings, they're moving through that. So we're working on finishing that up this week, and then next week, they're planning to start taking trees down. So every year, the Tree and Park, right around December, January, February, as long as, again, the snow lets us and the weather lets us, we take trees down throughout the winter. You know, Dave Laliberty and his team, they average a hundred years, up to a hundred trees a year, and these are trees that from one year to the next, he watches, residents call up, homeowners call up to let us know that, you know, there's no leaves on that tree, you know, is that thing dead? Or, you know, is it just taking a nap for the year? So he's, he has a list, and he goes around town, and anything that's hazardous, dead, you know, we'll remove internally with our own Tree and Park Department, which is pretty impressive. The seventy-foot buck truck we have, the trees that they can take down is a true asset here in Foxborough because that stuff that, you know, you're going to pay two thousand dollars a tree if you're bringing a company in to take some of these trees down. So it really is a true asset that we have, that team within the DPW here in town.
Do they also do pruning? Like if the tree was fairly good, but there were a couple of big dead leaders over wires and stuff?
Yeah, that's part of it, too. So if there are some dead branches on it, you know, if there's anything that's hanging out over the road or private property that's, you know, looks like it could fall off with a little bit of heavy snow, they will do pruning as well. You know, one of the things that we look at is those are town trees, so those are trees that are within the town public right of way. So that's the question that we always get is, well, it's your tree, it's a town tree, you know, you need, well, we have a process, we can look at it, you know, myself, Lance, who's the town engineer, even Ryan Norton, who's our GS coordinator, can look at our property mapping throughout town, figure out where that tree falls. Is it within the town right of way? Is it our responsibility, or is it up to the homeowner to remove that tree? So that can average from, that goes anywhere. So that can average from, it goes anywhere from two feet off the edge of the pavement to 15 feet off the edge of the pavement. And it all, it changes road by road and house by house, so it's, people always ask what it is, and then there's no clear answer until we look at a plan and look at a map.
Well, that's a big variance, two feet to 15.
So we have, we have roads that are 33 feet in layout width. So if you have 24 feet of pavement, you have a sidewalk on one side, that's another five feet, so now you're up to 29 feet. The width of the road, the layout, is only 33 feet. So you could have two feet on either side. We also have roadways that are 60 feet in layout. Again, the same 24-foot roadway pavement lies now has, you know, it extends out to 60 feet. So it is, it's a big variance, and it does change from one road to the next.
That's where sometimes people will say, do technically, the first six feet of your lawn aren't technically yours? That it could be, it could be part of the town.
Correct, it could be part of the town right-of-way. Yep.
Chris, is it, is it true, like when they say, so say there's a, say there's a tree, and it's clearly on homeowners, but the branch is coming over? So if they don't want to take the branch down, you guys could, like if it's coming over the road or by a wire, you guys could, if you think it's just safe enough to, you know, the homeowner's not going to take it down, you guys can just go, you guys can do that if it's, if the branch is actually coming into, like on the wires or over the street or something?
Yeah, there's a process for that. You know, if it's a nuisance tree, we have a process we can go through where, you know, we notify the homeowner, you know, the branches are over the town property, you know, they need to be removed. It's similar to private property to private property, where if that branch is hanging over your property line, it's on your property, you have the right to prune it and trim it back to the property line.
Yeah.
So same thing with the trees, anything that hangs over the public right-of-way, you know, we have the right to go and trim those trees to the property line.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, as we do that and we're working through trees, you know, one went to the next. You know, we work hand-in-hand with National Grid. You know, the last five years, they've done extensive work in town, not only upgrades to their system, but also tree trimming, pruning, and that's something we work hand-in-hand. A lot of times, Dave will, Dave will see a tree, it's over the wires, it's through the wires, we can't touch it. There's certain requirements that we don't go near those trees. So he has his contacts and working with Ann, too. You know, we're able to contact National Grid and say, you know, we've got this tree, it's a hazard, you know, can you put it on your list? And usually, within that same year, it's getting taken care of. So with that, you know, I'll let Ann talk a little bit about what they've done over the last five years, and then we can open up if there's any extra questions.
Okay, thank you.
And yes, we have a, actually, we have a tree trimming program at National Grid. It's a five-year cycle. And what we do is we trim our trees through our circuits that go through town. And basically, you have, I think you have five substations in town, and each substation has numerous circuits that go throughout the town. So each feeder, so every five years, we trim those, so, and we stagger them, so we don't do the whole town one year. So we do, might do a couple of feeders one year, you know, some the next, and then in five years, we start all over again. And all we do is trimming. And we do, I think it's, the minimum is six feet onto the sides and 10 feet above and below our lines. And it's only our lines. Our lines are at the top of the poles, there's multiple other conductors, there's Verizon, there's cable, there's all sorts of other fiber on there. We don't trim that, we only trim our lines. And then after they finish the cycle of trimming, they keep track of any hazardous trees that they may see, or they call them, I didn't realize it was the name, leaders, the big huge limbs that come over. During the trim cycle, they can't cut them, they only trim them, and then we come back to the town and say, hey, these things need a little bit more attention, do we have your permission to remove this tree? We can't just cut a tree on our own, we have to talk with the town. And sometimes it is a private citizen that owns the tree, we can't touch it, we have to, we can trim it if it's near our lines, but if it has to come down, we have to talk to them and get their permission before.
And then you guys take everything away, I believe it was National Grid that was a big story on the news, it wasn't in Foxborough, where they took down a bunch of trees and just left them.
During our trim cycle, we remove, we remove that, those branches, but during a storm, we don't. During a storm, it's up to the town to remove them, because we just, we're trying to.
Cut and go.
Bring the power back, so we don't have time.
Yeah.
It's like, remove the tree, move on to the next one, remove the tree, move on to the next one. So during an emergency, we don't have the time to do that. But during our regular cycle process, we do take, we do cut down, we do take away the debris.
Yeah. But if it's not, so in that case, it was, it was, you know, it's a hypothetical, but you never know if it could happen here. So in that case, I believe they took trees down, it wasn't on town property, it was on a, it was on a person's private property. So I guess one of the trees was hitting one of the wires, they dropped the trees and left thousands, $6,000 worth of.
Yes, because it's on our tree, it's basically their tree. So, I mean, we cut it down so we could put the wires back up, but it's not our responsibility to take the debris.
Okay.
Because in that reason, it is their tree, so it's their responsibility.
Yeah.
And that's, that's something that we work with National Grid with. You know, the hazard tree program that they have, if we're identifying trees that are hazardous, but they're in the wires, you know, we'll work with them and their crews. Sometimes they can get a crew out there to take the tree down and remove the hazard, but they don't have the staff or the crew there to get the debris away.
Yeah.
So sometimes we'll coordinate with them, and this is, you know, Dave, Dave's been doing it for 49 years, he's the one with the connection, so I'm stealing his phone when he leaves, but, you know, that coordination, they can come down, take the tree down below the wires, move on to the next thing. Our crews can come in behind them, remove the butt, the log that's still standing, you know, drop the rest of the tree, take all the debris.
Yeah.
Same thing during storms, you know, we know where the trees are, we drive the town after every, you know, any big storms, any little storms that we know there's a lot of tree debris, our crews drive the town with the wood chippers. They pick anything up that fell within the right-of-way, we'll pick that up. You know, what we, what we try to do, probably shouldn't say this, but we try to get through the town as quick as we can, so that we know that that's what fell within the street. Because if we get three, four, five days, people have had time to cut the trees up from their backyard, and now they're dragging everything out to the street.
Typically what happens.
One question, you had mentioned that National Grid trims their wires, so all the other wires, who trims them? Does anybody?
I don't know if Verizon has a program.
Yeah, it's rare that I see anybody in from Verizon or Comcast coming in to trim around their wires. You know, they certainly, I haven't heard of any program that they have similar to National Grid where they're going around.
That's when, when you drive around, you see some weird things, like the top wires are perfectly clear, and then there's stuff, and you say to yourself, why don't they just cut it all?
Right, right.
But anybody think know the fact that Dave's been doing it for 49 years?
I tell you, the Foxborough Tree and Park Department on all levels does a phenomenal job. Especially in the wintertime, they're out plowing forever, and then they're right back out there, you know, cleaning up, and they do a great job.
So, I mean, there's a lot of work that goes into it. You know, it's not just one year at a time, it's a, it's a cycle, you know, like Ann said, that five-year cycle, you know, people think just because they don't see them every year on their street or in their neighborhood that they're not doing anything, but, you know, they're hitting the whole town in a five-year clip, which is impressive. Because there's a lot of mileage.
And if there's a tree that's, you know, is leaning on wires and it's not in the cycle, if we get a call from somebody, we'll go out and address it and we'll take care of it. It's not like we have to wait, you have to wait three years or two years. If somebody says it's a hazard and we go out there, we've taken care of that as well.
Mr. Chairman, there's a question for Ann. Ann, what, any improvements to the wires themselves, the infrastructure in town that's been done during the past few years?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Any, any improvements to the infrastructure that you have during the past few years?
Yes, oh, yeah, we've done, I think, you probably all remember 2012, and we had the big storms, and I think the town, a lot of the towns were out for over a week.
Yep.
And we had some problems with our, a lot of the substations were flat because of the supply lines. We had problems with the supply lines and everything. So since then, we've upgraded all the supply lines to all the substations in Foxborough. So that's like Run 06 going to the substation, we have a substation on Route 1, Crocker Pond, which was originally built for the Gillette Stadium, and we have one over on DePoisette Street. So we just upgraded that substation. We built a new one north of, right, I don't know what the town is, north of Foxborough, but we built a new substation across the street from Gillette Stadium due to the increased capacity that was shown in the area. So that's a brand-new substation up on Route 1. And then we also have one across from the DPW office, and we're working on that right now, and that's, we're doing the design study for that, and probably in the next year, we'll stop construction, and we're going to be revamping that substation. So all the supply lines have been, have been upgraded, we're working on all the substations, and we're replacing a lot of the wire that's out in the street. A lot of it is bare wire, and we put in what we call tree wire or spacer cable, so it's more, it's stronger against the trees when the trees fall down on them, it's stronger and the power doesn't go out. So that's, we're also doing that as well. And then during an actual storm, we prepare, we have an emergency response plan that we have to follow, we file it with the DPU, and we review that with the town. Every year, we have a meeting with the fire and police chiefs every year to go over what that plan is. And basically, the plan is, you know, we, before a storm, we send out an email like the other day for yesterday's storm, the day before, we send out an email, and Chris is on it, and Bill is on it, and the fire and police chief are on it, letting them know we're expecting a storm, and we tell them what level storm we think it is, and we have five levels. A level four storm is what we had yesterday, where we think the power is going to be out for 24 hours, which basically is what happened. It was most, everybody was restored within 24 hours. A level three storm is a three-day, we anticipate people could be without power for three days. A level two storm is a much stronger storm, that would be a week. And obviously, we have yet to have a level one storm where it's been over a week. So it gives the town, say, this is how long we think you're going to be out of power to check your critical facilities, generators, make sure everything's ready to go. We have a critical facility list, we review that four times a year with the town, and basically, we code all of the accounts, so we know when they're out of power, we know if a critical facility is out, the water and pump, the water and sewer pump stations, the schools, the communication towers, all those are coded. So when we know, so when they're, they don't have power, we know they don't have power. And we ask the town to review that every year, so if a new pump station gets installed, we make sure that's on the list. A new evacuation center, we want to make sure we know where those are in town. So those are the priorities when the power goes out. Once the streets are cleared and everything, when we start the restoration process, we look for where those critical facilities are, and those are the first things that are addressed for restoration.
Take it, like Carlan and Court and Centennial are on that critical list?
Yes.
Yeah.
Those are housing authority properties, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Senior, senior, senior housing. And just, Mr. Chairman, just one more question. And just in terms of the response that, by the way, I will say, you know, we have a really good working relationship with you guys, and I just appreciate that and the relationship we've had for a number of years now. But the one thing I've seen slip a little bit, and I think would like to maybe have this addressed at a higher level, perhaps at some point, is that during a major storm, we do have somebody assigned to us.
Community liaison.
Community liaison, and it's a little disconcerting at times because they're not that familiar with our community, and I think it would be better if we had somebody who truly understands Foxborough and can actually be in a better position to respond to things, the needs as they pop up. I know it's a challenge to, for you to find people that are familiar with each community as their liaison, but I think to the extent, and this is some of the feedback I've gotten from my department heads who said, you know, we really would prefer to have somebody who's more understanding and have a better view of Foxborough to help coordinate the kind of needs that we have when it comes to a major outage. And so I, I don't know how, if you can respond to that now, or if it's something, it has to be addressed another time, but I think it would be something we'd like to see addressed.
Okay, yeah, we can, you know, I can look to see if we can find someone else to do that. Are you looking for someone who, like, you're talking about someone who lives in the community or is familiar with the community?
Either familiar with the community or familiar with our system in Foxborough. I mean, that's really the key, because they know if something goes out in some area, how it's going to affect the various segments of town, and then how that has to be restored, and what priorities should be given in terms of response time.
And we can even look to, you know, and liaisons, because what we have, you know, everybody at National Grid has, you have a blue-sky job and you have a storm job. So during a storm, your regular job is put aside, and we have people that, some people are liaisons, now that's not their regular job.
Right.
So, you know, they're not from, they may not be from the area, they may not be familiar with the distribution system, it's more, it's a communication, they're a communication tool. They are talking with the fire chief, and then they talk to our municipal room, and we try to get that information, the flow of information. So, so not always, you know, it's kind of hard, because we don't have a lot of people, you know, basically, I'm the only one, I cover 27 towns, so.
Right, so you can't do that, talk about.
Can't do all of those, so.
I think we got spoiled for a number of years because we had a really good one, and then we lost them. So, and I think that's, and we saw it drop off in terms of how the response was coordinated. So I think to the extent that we can get that back would certainly be helpful.
Even if that liaison just takes a day and makes a trip here to Foxborough, or any town that they're responsible for, and spend a day with Chris and drive around and see what.
Fire chief and police chief.
Yeah, exactly. Just so they're familiar and they're, you know, they know the lay of the land, and we're the five power stations.
I can definitely, I can definitely work, work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Leah?
No.
No, great, great presentation. Thank you for coming in. This is certainly timely, especially with the little bit of snow we had on the ground a few weeks ago already, and the big windstorm. Boy, I don't, I'm on Main Street, it sounded like a freight train coming down.
Yeah, it was tough.
Main Street yesterday, it was, it was crazy.
I want to thank.
But not too much damage in town.
Minimal.
Minimal, minimal damage, we were fortunate. I want to thank Leah for reminding me to do this, because we only try to do it every year, and Leah said, you know, it'd be good to bring National Grid in and Chris to do this, and so thank you for reminding me to do this.
Thank you for your time, too, for coming in.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Good to see you, Ann.
Here's Paige.
Paige is on.
Oh, Paige is on, Paige. There you are.
Hi.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good. You ready for your presentation?
We're ready.
Yeah, I'm right, I'm two minutes late, so we're good.
You guys are really good. I warned Alexis that we were after National Grid and the Council on Aging, so I didn't have high hopes for starting on time, but kudos to you guys. With me is Alexis Smith, she's from MAPC, but I'm just going to start off with a few opening remarks to sort of set the stage. Just to let you know, the goal of tonight is really, we knew you have a full agenda, so we don't want to spend a lot of time. The real purpose of tonight is to make sure that the residents of Foxborough, the Board of Selectmen, that you all know that this draft is available. It's 100, 138 pages or something like that, it's a lot. So there's nothing we can really summarize efficiently in the COVID era really right now, but we are encouraging folks to go onto the town's website, the front page, and check out the draft. So just to set the stage, we started our conversation on housing back in the spring of 2019. So we've been talking about housing for a while. One of the questions that's come up even recently has been, since Foxborough has over since Foxborough over, has over 10% of, uh, quote unquote, affordable housing on our subsidized housing inventory, why are we even doing this plan? And that is a good question and it's a good point. Technically, we are not, it's not clear how required this plan is, given that, that we're not seeking safe harbor, which safe harbor is when you are under the 10%. If a community makes certain strides every year towards their affordable housing goal, then they get what's safe harbor from 40B. Well, since we're over 10% already, we, we have this quote unquote, safe harbor. So we don't technically need to do this and yet what we are hearing and the, the reason we're doing it is that there is still a need for housing, affordable housing, shall I say. Um, that's the, the technical reason why we're doing. The reason I've kind of pushed for this is that I speak to the seniors all the time. Well, I can't say all the time, but for the five years I've been here, which today is my five year anniversary. Um, but the five years I've been here, I've gotten to know quite a few seniors at the senior center and they come to me, you know, and they're, and they're, you all know, they're, they're fun to hang out with and they're great to talk to. But they have a problem because a lot of them own their homes, um, and they want to downsize. And there's really nowhere for them to downsize in town. So that's really the driving force behind, you know, why am, why did I go after a housing production plan? We got grant funding for most of the money, for most of the project. Why did I do this when technically we could coast on our, our affordable housing accomplishments? I do want to note that 500 of the affordable housing units in Foxborough are over at the Lodge and what's called the Sylvan on Fisher Street. And only 25% of those 500 units are technically affordable. And I don't know how often you've checked the rents there, but affordable is relative when you're in the Boston area. So that's all, that's a big concern for me is while we did check off the list, we don't have a huge stock of affordable housing and we are hearing it from our residents. So that's the stage I want to set. I'm going to turn it over to Alexis to give a brief presentation and then we'll have some time for Q and A from the board. But as I said, the main goal here is to just get the word out that this draft is available. And, um, we'll go over the schedule at the end. But basically folks have till December 18th to submit comments, um, in writing, verbally, on email, whatnot. So Alexis, if you wouldn't mind taking it away.
All right, great, thank you, Paige. I'm just going to share my screen here. Um, but in the meanwhile, I'll just say thank you to the, to the board, um, for, for having us here and, um, also to Paige and Gabby in the planning department and to all the working group members, um, who also have been contributing. Um, it's, it's been a, it's been a team effort. Um, so let me just try to get this, there we go. Um, is, can I get a thumbs up if you can see that screen? All right, great, thank you. Um, so as Paige said, we're talking about housing tonight. Um, let me move ahead here. There we go. Um, I, I, I'll just skip through these really quickly. Um, a, a, again, as, as Paige said, this is, you know, a chance to really proactively identify what the town wants out of its housing in, in, in the years moving forward. Um, I'm not going to spend a ton of time looking at all of these different pieces. We're going to talk mostly about, um, the strategy recommendations tonight, which is the last bucket here. Um, but I just want you to be aware that there's a lot more to the plan. It's, you know, it starts off with a pretty detailed analysis of demographics and housing and all that. So, um, again, the full version is available online. Uh, if you're interested, please, please take a look, um, and comment. Um, just kind of backing up to how we got here, um, we started in last September. Um, we've had a couple of different public forums, um, and opportunities for folks to, to offer input. Um, and you, and, and at the end of this, we'll get a little more into kind of what our, what our next steps are. Um, but it's been, it's been an iterative process. Um, so just really quick, um, the, I'm going to go through, the, the, what's in the HPP is far more detailed, but I'll, I'm just going to give you a few highlights to kind of echo what, what Paige was saying. Um, you know, one of the things that, one of the interesting little nuggets that we, we found as we were doing the analysis is that more than half of Foxborough households are only one or, one, consist of only one or two people. So, so quite small, but the majority of Foxborough's housing is three bedrooms or more. Um, and that's not to say that every one person household wants to live in, you know, a small, um, a small house, but there's, you know, maybe a little bit of a mismatch there. And it's consistent with what we were hearing from folks about seniors wanting to be able to stay in, in the community when they downsize, but not necessarily having any good options. Um, a, again, there, there isn't, there is still a need for housing in town. Um, 30% of folks who live in Foxborough are what's considered cost burdened, which means they pay more than 30% of their, um, of their income towards housing. And this is, again, back, back to the, the seniors, it's even higher for, for seniors. Um, so it's again, just there's, there's, there's a, there's a need out there for other options. Um, and to the point again, the, the town has safely reached safe harbor and is in no danger of losing safe harbor, which is great. Um, but that doesn't mean, that's kind of a, a threshold that the state advises, but that doesn't mean that there's nothing more to do. Um, you know, there's, there's still, still a need for a few different housing options in town. So with that, I'll, um, jump quickly into the goals. Um, we developed these this spring based on the, the data and the needs assessment that we done, comments received at public forums and some back and forth with the, the working group. Um, first is to encourage housing production that is unsubsidized, um, but is affordable uh, to, to the typical house, Foxborough household. Again, this is a, one of the biggest themes that's going to come out in the HPP is just the desire for smaller, more naturally affording, affordable housing options, whether that's a place for seniors to downsize or a place for, you know, a starter home for a family that's, you know, just, just getting out, you know, getting started. Um, so things, things that are similar to many of the town's older, smaller homes rather than some of the larger, more expensive stuff that's been built recently. Um, secondly, establish a regulatory environment to support this. Um, the, you know, the sort of housing that we're talking about isn't happening in town. So, you know, let's look at ways to adjust the regulations to, to create market solutions. Um, and third, a, a variety of choices. Again, this is just getting back to the idea of, you know, there are lots of different people in town who have different housing needs and there should be options for them, um, you know, in, in, in town. Uh, number four, uh, look at deed restricted housing. The, the previous three that I've spoken about have been looking at more, you know, ways to get smaller, more naturally affordable, uh, housing, uh, you know, in, in housing options in town. This looks at, you know, actually deed restricted, permanently affordable housing for kind of the, the lowest income resident, or low and moderate income residents, I should say. Um, and then the last one is just to maintain a balance. Um, we, you have heard that housing, we, we recognize housing is one of the town's many priorities and we've heard from a lot of folks that fiscal responsibility is really important in town. And so, you know, paying attention to what, what costs they're going to be in, making sure that, you know, there's, there's, uh, you know, that, that the town remains in a good spot fiscally, uh, is, is important. So with that, I'm going to jump into the, the strategies. Um, the plan recommends, the draft plan recommends seven priority strategies that we developed over the spring and summer. Um, and just to, to kind of put this into perspective, most of these would require a lot more planning and consideration by the town. Um, this is, this, this HPP would just be a start to, to any of these. Um, anything with zoning would require two thirds approval at town meeting. Um, this is just the, the first step towards a, towards more conversation, uh, on these subjects. Um, so first, uh, looking at repurposing vacant buildings as housing. Um, this would, you know, turn a vacant building from a liability into an asset. Um, some things like the prep school, um, you know, like similar to what the, the town has already done at the, the state hospital, you know, looking for more opportunities like that, where, you know, the building exists and is historic, so it's already consistent with the town's architectural character. Um, the second, um, again, getting back to that, I, I, I keep, I'm going to keep saying smaller, more naturally affordable housing, but this is just look, you know, looking at ways to enable that to happen, um, that, that aren't happening right now. Um, so this would be to, to create a zoning bylaw that would encourage that type of housing. Um, those who were at the February panel where we looked at small housing types, uh, might remember that this is a big part of the conversation there and there was a lot of really interesting comments about how this sort of housing could really fit in town and be, be designed to be, um, really context appropriate. The third strategy, uh, is a smart growth overlay district. This is similar to the previous one and it's, it's another way to achieve that smaller housing. Um, this is a, this is a specific state program that encourages mixed income housing in specific areas where it makes sense. Um, the, the zoning would allow for, this type of zoning, uh, would allow for a certain amount of density and would require 24% affordable units. And in exchange, the state makes incentive payments to towns that adopt this, both when they're, when, uh, both upon adoption and then as, as units are built. Um, so that's another interesting op, or another good option to, um, to look at, you know, creating some different types of housing in town. Um, again, continuing on that theme, uh, we have accessory apartments. Um, these are in-law or apartments or granny flats. Um, again, with the, this, just the smaller housing that is kind of, it's small scale. Um, they're currently allowed in town, but under pretty limited conditions and not many get built. Um, so this recommendation is to amend the bylaw to be more flexible. Um, for example, like allowing non-family members to live in, in one of these, uh, in, in accessory apartment. Um, number five, uh, duplex design guidelines. Um, we heard from a lot of folks that the duplexes that have been built in recent years are perceived as being too large and too, too expensive and out of character with, with, with Foxborough. Um, and so he, it's, the planning board could adopt, um, design guidelines that would really lay out, okay, you're going to build a duplex, this is what we want to see. Um, and here are ways to make, you know, to, to play with the massing and the scale to just make, make duplexes more context sensitive, um, and, and more, more responsive what people want to see in town. Uh, six, uh, expand housing authority capacity. Um, this is specifically looking at, um, expanding, in building additional affordable housing units on the Housing Authority's Walnut Street site. Um, and these would be deed restricted, permanently affordable housing. Um, and last year the town received a grant to design infrastructure. So this is just saying, you know, let's, you know, continue, continue that effort. Um, and finally, fi, a funding source for housing programs. Um, there were a lot of strategies that folks liked, um, but that did not make it into this plan because they would require, uh, you know, a steady funding stream. And we, 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 we did take seriously the, the guidance to, you know, be fiscally responsible. Um, so, you know, one of the things that, what this does recommend is to look for some sort of source that could eventually fund some of these programs that people were excited about. Um, this could be the adoption of the Community Preservation Act, but it could also look at ways to leverage, um, the, the asset that is the, the stadium in town. Um, to just, you know, again, begin to see some of the things that, that people are interested in, but that, you know, we don't want to recommend yet without having a, having a source identified. So that, there was a lot of information really quickly, uh, but just next steps. Um, we are, um, will be giving a plan, a presentation at the planning board next week, I believe. Um, if December 10th is next week, yes. Um, during the, the comment period, um, myself and other staff will be holding virtual office hours for folks who have questions or just want to talk about, you know, the, the HPP to, to come in and discuss. Um, there's a few different points for that, um, posted here. Uh, and then on December 18th, the comment period will close and we'll look at starting to, um, you know, to, to sift through the comments and revise the HPP. Um, so that's, that's what I have. Um, Paige, is there anything else you want to add?
Um, I don't think so, Alexis. You've covered just about everything. I think, um, really, like I said, we wanted folks to know about this and we're glad to take any, you know, initial questions that the board has, but I don't, I don't expect that you've all even read the document yet. So, um, but I'm giving you homework right now, please read it. And same to all the residents, please read it, uh, because it really, um, folks feel, you know, most of us are all set with housing and we're very fortunate for that. But I can tell you, there is a strong voice in Foxborough, um, of folks that are not all set. So, um, you know, and, and we're not looking to change character and you'll see that a lot of these discussions were, um, context sensitive. We're not trying to overhaul anything or change the character. I had a great question today of, you know, are you trying to change the R40 district? Which is the, you know, the most of the town is R40 and more rural and, and that is not the case. Um, so I guess I'll turn it over to the board. Alexis, can you unshare your screen?
Yes.
And then, um, if anybody has any questions.
Right off, right off the bat, is there a way for us to get this PowerPoint? I don't think we have it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would like that, okay. I do have a couple of questions, but if anybody else, I need to pull them and frame them in the right order. So if anybody else.
No, we're all going to stare at you while you're framing.
So.
I have a couple too, but.
All right, go ahead.
I wrote mine, I wrote some mine down. I won't, I have five questions, but I need to ask all five, I just.
Well, you ask all five and maybe I don't have to ask any of mine.
Ask anything, okay. So, a couple of things. Um, I went to two of the forums that you had. I'll, I'll be honest, and I didn't get all the way through. I go about halfway through the document. So, I'm, I'm not taking away, maybe it's me. I am not taking away that this is answering any of the concerns of the seniors in town. Um, so, some of the, uh, I feel like it's more builder friendly than, um, resident friendly. Um, I mean, the presentation I saw talked about, um, those cottage homes. Now for me, the only two I specifically, the ones that across from Stop and Shop that I haven't heard one person say that they find them attractive, they're tiny, they're right on top of each other. Um, I don't think it fits in the character of Foxborough at all. Um, and then there's the other ones that are up past me on Coacit, like Carrie Circle, that are similar. It doesn't quite to be so compact as, as the one across from Stop and Shop, but they're, and, and I live in a small community. The community I live in, Summerfield, built 326 homes on like 300 acres. And we're, I think we're on like 100 acres of it, there's lots of common space. The houses don't all look alike, they're scattered up and down, but we're still very small. My lot is like 7,200 square feet. I'm not even on a quarter of an acre. But when you drive down through our neighborhood, it doesn't seem that the houses are on top of each other. Um, I think Doc, you, you've been to my house. Uh, so do you know what I mean?
No, absolutely.
You know, compared to like across from Stop and Shop. Now, of course, that's a big piece of land that's been there for 25 years. So, i- if it was something like that, I could see, but I, I listened to a lot about affordable homes for seniors and I sat here and watched a room of maybe 20 seniors where, where, like their eyes were, were wide open and, oh my God, I'm going to be able to sell my home and downsize. And nothing I heard was really for them. You know, it talked about, um, building eight houses on maybe even acre of land and 20% of them would be affordable. So the other ones are going for 550 or 600,000, which to me is not affordable. And most of the, the seniors, they, you know, um, the questions they were asking was, oh, I don't need granite countertops and no, I don't need two stories, I want a ranch. Well, that wasn't what this was proposing because you're trying to put as much home in as little of a space. So you're not talking about ranches, they're going to be two stories. Um, uh, master bedrooms on the first floor. So, um, but to me, I felt like the seniors who want to sell their home and downsize aren't going to qualify for this affordable housing. And they all sat in this room acting like if this went through, they're going to have the opportunity to be in one of these homes, which isn't the truth. You know, these homes aren't, we're not taking care of, um, my first goal is to take care of the people in Foxborough that want to stay in Foxborough. And a lot of these, these plans aren't about taking care of the people in Foxborough who want to stay in Foxborough. This isn't guaranteed for them. I find 550, 600,000 not affordable and so I don't know if I'm just not getting the plan.
Yeah, I, um, the only reason I want to stop because you're just giving them a ton of information. And I.
Did I ask anything?
It, it does, it does seem like you're missing something, but I'm going to let Paige, um, it, she is missing something, isn't she, Paige?
Yes.
The difference between.
Well, I mean, but she's not alone. I've heard this comment from others and it, it does dishearten me. But listen, the, the stuff across from Stop and Shop was a 40B. A 40B is very different than what we're talking about here. Um, we're not, anything that gets done right now in this conversation, um, with this housing production plan, is at the town's option. That's the big difference. The 40B in Fox, in, across from Stop and Shop, I can tell you, I sat through the meetings with the zoning board where they tried to cut out units. Um, and they were not allowed to under that state law. We're no longer vulnerable to 40B, so that's off the table. So what we're talking about is, yes, I could see the cottage style housing looking builder friendly. We're, we're, we're walking a fine line only because the builders are not going to build anything for the seniors unless there's a way to make some money. I'm not purporting to have all the answers on how to do it. This is a regional problem and I think I've heard my boss, Bill Keegan, say this before. Like if we could solve this housing problem, we'd be very wealthy. So this is, we're sort of trying to push water uphill. But that said, we are trying to come up with possible solutions that would allow, we're trying to be very clear that you might have to allow some density in order to allow, for these small homes that we hope will naturally be lower price, because I agree, 550, five or 600 is not affordable. Um, you know, we're trying to create this naturally through the market. That's where this is coming from. It's not at all to try to make builders happy. We're not trying to find ways to do it. That said, if the builders can't find a way to make it work, nothing will be built. And maybe that's what folks really want, but I could tell you that there's a pretty sizable voice that, you're right, isn't going to income qualify for the Walnut Street housing. You know, they might own a home, but they don't want to spend 500,000 on, to, to downsize, you know, and they might even be able to afford to do so. But they might want to find something that's in the 400s or, you know, I don't know, or maybe they want to rent. Um, but, so I guess I'm saying this doesn't have all the answers, but it does continue the conversation. And anything like cottage housing or the smart growth districts will require so much more planning and conversation and, and votes of the town that this would not actually do anything standing on its own. But it just shows a commitment to try to continue to work on it.
So, Mr. Chairman, just, so I just want to speak to the elephant in the room really, really, which is really what drives this whole issue is the cost of land. So if, if you were to take that, so the only way that you can really solve this issue is if the town had a large tract of town owned land or the state had a large tract of. of state land that they, they're willing to donate for the purposes of building affordable housing, then we could maybe control the process that way to a degree. Now, having said that, once you control the land, you then would have to go out to bid to see who would do, who would build the project and to see if in fact, a developer would be willing to do it in a way that would make it, you know, somewhat affordable to those people that would love to live in that, in those communities. But I think it's a challenge because there aren't large tracts of state owned land that could be used for that purpose, nor is there a large tract of town owned land for that purpose. And the only other way that would be if somebody decided, I'm going to donate a large tract of land for that purpose to the town that could be used under those conditions. So I think the driver of this whole process is land and that's what a short supply is right now, unbuildable land. We could, we could certainly talk about tracts of land, but then you have areas that are limited by the soil conditions for either a perk test or don't have sewer connected to it. So therefore it makes it very difficult to, to develop that property. I, I think if there was a better answer to that, I think there are developers who are looking at the prospect of possibly doing a, a friendly 40B approach, which would mean that it would, they'd work with us to try and reduce the lot sizes down to a point where a higher density yields a more affordable type of construction that could be done. The challenge was of course is that, that the community, that people in the neighborhood might, might react negatively to say, we don't want that level of density next to us. And those are the challenges we face in trying to come up with public policy to drive this issue for the residents of this community. And then quite honestly, I get the total, we totally get the concerns that, that seniors are raising here because they have been living here for a long time and the challenge, the thing that's happened to them is that when they bought their houses, they bought them at very affordable prices. Those houses are no longer affordable that they, if they had to go out and buy those houses today, they could not afford them. And so I think that's, we're up against that kind of a dilemma and it's not just unique to Foxborough, it's everywhere. So, and Paige is right, if we could figure this out, we wouldn't be sitting here, I can tell you that. But I can tell you, but, but the thing, the obvious thing to me is if you can come up with a track of land that's affordable and, or the publicly owned, or if there was a large donation of public money towards that effort to offset the cost of the development, that would make it more affordable for residents to do that. The town's not in a position to do that. Perhaps the state or the federal government might come to a rescue, but I don't see that happening anytime, anytime soon either.
So if I could just tidy this up with, that's why there's multi-tier approaches here, like the, the accessory apartment thing is not, we don't anticipate a lot of accessory apartments would be built, but if a handful were built and it took care of, say, 10 seniors, you know, that opted to want to live in someone's backyard or, you know, they're, the, the first floor of their house or something, that's another option. It's, it's for 10 seniors. The design guideline thing, that, that wasn't really clear, but what that is, is what, in the R15 zoning district, which is the area around uptown, there's a lot of capes and bungalows and ranches that are actually quite affordable, but they need upgrades. So what we're seeing is developers swoop in and buy them because in the R15 district, you're allowed to convert a single family to a two-family by right. Now, we're not proposing to get rid of that because again, we think it's important to have a, a multitude of choice. It's really about housing choices. You know, the duplexes serve a purpose. Some people don't want to own a whole home, they want to buy, own a half a home. The problem is, if you notice, you go down Glenwood and other areas, these duplexes are now so big that they too are selling for $500,000 each side. So, and why wouldn't a developer spend 300, 400,000 or whatever the number is today for a bungalow, tear it down and put up 2, 500,000? I mean, everybody's doing quote unquote their job here, but this is why we're trying to take a multi-tier approach where we could actually, you know, tackle that where we wouldn't not allow duplexes, but we'd make sure that the duplexes didn't overtake the whole neighborhood and didn't come out of scale and thereby, by staying smaller, which is more likely the case, they would thereby naturally stay more affordable. So I'll stop with that, but I'm just trying to show the different layers we're looking at to try to create some choices to get smaller sized homes to be built.
Can we go to Chris and then back to you, Stephanie?
Yeah, so some of those layers and options are good in this plan. Some of the things that cause some concern to me is on the larger scale when we're talking about the town being a development partner with anybody. I mean, we're a municipality, we're not developers, so that, you know, causes pause with me. The Community Preservation Act is another one that is going to be tough. I mean, we set the tax rate a couple of nights ago, a couple of meetings ago, and, and there was an option we could have exercised, but we chose to not even talk about it, and this is virtually the same thing. So, you know, you're going to be adding.
It's a little different, it's a little different in that respect. So that was, the, the Community Preservation Act is, is a tax on transfer tax, taxes that go through every real estate transaction. And then what it does, that money comes back to the town to be used for public purposes.
So is the, the CPA on just transfer, so if I sell my home?
It's a transfer tax.
Oh, okay, all right. So I'm mistaken. Again, though, I mean, a couple of the bigger nuggets here, just to me, I know there are grant, you guys have gotten some grants and stuff, but what happens if the grants go away? Like, how is the town going to even try to fund any of this? And trust me, I'm in that age category where I want to downsize, but it, to me, I just see dollar signs and we've already, for the six years I've been here, listened to residents complaining about taxes and, and growth and, you know, more money. So, you know, few concerns.
Okay, so mine's kind of like a, like a three-part question and, and if you don't have an answer tonight, that's, you know, that's fine because we're just, you know, throwing these at you maybe at a later date. So I want to know what other communities has MAPC done a plan for? What strategies in our plan were also included in the, in the plans for some of the other towns that they've worked for? And have those towns had good results or have they been unintended consequences? And so I'm just curious, what other towns that might be similar to us, they have done a plan for and how that worked out?
Alexis, I'll, I'll let you handle that one if you're able.
Absolutely. Just off the top of my head, this is certainly not a complete list, but in the past couple of years, MAPC has done a housing plan for Stonem, Winchester, Marblehead. I believe they're, and currently we're doing one in, an update in Ashland. There's one more that I'm forgetting. I can, I can, I can mail you a list. I can say some of these strategies appear in the other plans, like a, a smart growth district is, it's, it's a good, it's a good program. And so that is something that you, you'll probably see in at least one of our other plans. Some of these are pretty unique to Foxborough. The, the cottage, cottage housing is kind of a new, a new thing that we're, that has, you know, that a lot of towns are interested in, but that is something that really arose out of this like ongoing conversation about like, we just need some smaller places to move into that, that we can afford. The, so the, the Housing Authority one, obviously that, that's, that's Foxborough specific. Duplex Design Guidelines was in response to what folks were seeing in the, in the R15 district. So I can, I can send you, I can get you a more detailed information, but I, you know, I will say some of, some of the recommendations you will find in other plans because they're, they're good policy and some of these are pretty Foxborough specific. Yeah.
Yeah, so, so basically too, so the towns that you mentioned, I don't have much knowledge of. Are these towns, in your opinion, similar to Foxborough? Or, I mean, I don't need to draw up a plan for each town. Each town is going to be different. I, I get that. I'm just curious if, so, so we have something to say that some of these strategies or the plans, if that have, they've moved forward, have they been successful in those towns? So, you know, which doesn't mean they'll be successful here or not, but just to kind of, just to kind of, kind of get an idea. Because the cottage house is, sounds like a great idea. I mean, my house is probably considered a cottage house, okay? But it's just, it's not the house itself, it's how you're clustering them or, or how some of these plans are, you know, I think that night, you know, they talked about, like I said, eight houses on an acre. So it, it's not the home itself. I think, I think the homes are adorable. It's, you know, I wish they, they'd make them look a little bit different so it's not cookie cutter throughout the whole, whole thing, but it's not the house itself, it's how they're, how they're clustered together. I mean, it's really close. I just don't think that seems to me like, those, those developments stick out in, in, like a sore thumb in town. They're not the fabric of Foxborough. So, so I think that, you know, I didn't grow up here, but, I've been here for 22 years, my husband grew up here. I think people take a lot of pride in Foxborough and the uniqueness of it, where this quaint little tiny town with a football stadium in it and, and so, but I think they, they try their best to keep the fabric of the uniqueness of our town and I just, some, some of, some of the plans that they showed that night, they just don't seem to me like they fit in Foxborough. Just my opinion, that's all, you know, my opinion.
Any other thoughts from the board? And this is way early in the process. You know, we're throwing out stuff, you're going to be throwing back stuff.
Yeah, I just had one other. Can you just throw me a couple of examples of nonprofit builders? Like, are there, I mean, when I first read the first time, I was like, oh, they talk in Habitat for Humanity, but then it's in there a couple of times. So are there a lot of nonprofit builders out there?
Alexis, you might know better than me on that. I don't have a good, that's, that would be like my next step if, if we were going to adopt this plan. Habitat for Humanity is the one that comes to mind. There's a Habitat affiliate in the South Shore that kind, that, who's, you know, the area that they work in stretches kind of around Foxborough and, and that would be a, a good place to start. Also, they, you know, they build smaller, smaller hap, you know, smaller housing, smaller, you know, they, they don't build big apartment buildings and I think that that's, you know, we've heard loud and clear that the big apartment buildings is not what Foxborough is looking for. There's a lot of other, you know, nonprofits that are active regionally. A lot of, many of them are very local, locally based. So I think, you know, what Foxborough would need to do would be to reach out to someone that, you know, in, that's active in a nearby town and, you know, invite them to, to come in. And that's where, and that's where the town would facilitate a little bit. The town wouldn't be developing certainly, but it would be kind of laying the groundwork to make, you know, open up a pathway for some of these nonprofit developers to, you know, to, to, to maybe consider building something here.
So we are in fact talking about like a Habitat for Humanity type of a model?
Yep. I mean, Habitat is homeownership housing and there are other, there are other nonprofit developers that build rental housing, but yeah, like a Habitat for Humanity.
Okay.
Great presentation. Thank you very much for spending your time with us tonight.
Thank you. And just a reminder, comments to me, by December 18th, everybody has homework and.
Yeah, can we get that PowerPoint that Alexis played?
Alexis and her staff have office hours, three hours over the next week or so, so check out our schedule, email me if you need it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Paige.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.
Bye.
Yeah, Christine is already going to get that for us. Chris.
Can you follow up on that Community Preservation Act?
Sure.
All right, Mike? Assistant Town Managers report.
So, okay, I got a lot of things going on here actually. So we have extended an offer to a building commissioner and he's a gentleman who's worked for the last 19 years in the town of Brookline and he'll be starting with us on Monday. He's highly qualified. He comes to us with the certified building official, you know, certification, which is, which is what we required of our new building commissioner. So his name is Barry Ringler and we're very happy to be bringing him on board next week.
How long's his commute?
Actually about, actually about 10 minutes.
Oh, good.
He lives in Walpole, so.
Oh, wow, that's great.
Really good news.
Okay.
So a couple, couple of recruitments that we're very active on and hope to have some news on maybe in the next couple of meetings are the, the Director of Public Health as well as the, the DPW Equipment Mechanic. So we'll have updates on those, you know, in one of our future meetings.
We're very close on both, actually, this one.
So a couple of other recruitments that we're active on, and these are ones that, you know, we've, we've talked about in the past, you know, casting a wider net, you know, through, through some of the other job search platforms such as Indeed and so forth. These ones that I'm about to mention, you will see in some of these other ones because they're more appropriate for that area. So DPW Highway, Highway Labor Driver. So we just lost someone to National Grid and we clearly can't compete with what National Grid is paying their laborers. So that's news as of yesterday, so I'll be posting that job tomorrow. And then also Tree and Park Labor Driver, similar. And then DPW Water Technician. And, and another one that I'll be posting tomorrow, again, to a very wide audience and hope to get a lot of return on this, is a Building Inspections Permit Coordinator. And that's a, that's a part-time 15-hour position and that's one that, that, you know, we haven't refilled, you know, someone who left us to homeschool their children, you know, recently. And so we're looking to, you know, fill that right away. So that's what's going on, the recruitment. And one other thing as far as promotional exams, I mentioned, I think at the last meeting that we're working on the Sergeant Assessment Exam for, or Assessment Center for Police Sergeants. And that will be happening probably sometime later in, in February, but once we nail down a date, we have a contractual obligation to, two of them actually. One is to, to give 60 days' notice to the officers who are eligible for that exam so that they can prepare. And the other one is to review the, the, the contract or proposed contract of vendor that we're going to hire to do this, you know, with union representation. So those are a couple of things we're going to do. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mike. Phil?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the budget process for the FY '22 session, season is underway. We've, as we, we have a schedule for that and we're actually staying on schedule for how we proceed with that. The shop local campaign is, is in full bloom right now and thanks to all the, the local folks who've been participating in that process and the, and to, and to the group that's been promoting that. Thanks to all of your efforts for doing that, to the Economic Development Committee and, and some of the folks that have been involved in that process from beginning, Heather Harding and, and O'Leary has been involved in that as well. So thank you to all of everybody who's been actively involved in that. Interesting to note that, that they actually were able to get that up on a billboard, an electronic billboard up on Route 1 to see, and that's actually, it's actually pretty nice to see that, that it's, that's part of the free time that's allotted to each community for, who has an electronic billboard to actually provide free advertisements. So that's something being done courtesy, courtesy of the billboard owner of that particular space. I mentioned earlier in my report on the COVID update, that both Chief Kelleher and Tom Kenvin are working with the Board of Health to try and secure a vaccine. As soon as they do, they're looking at ways to actually, how they can deploy that. And as soon as we have that information, we'll be getting it out to folks as, with, with the latest information we possibly can provide for them. Next week, in two weeks, the, the town manager will provide an update to all of you for, on how we're making progress in terms of our this year's goals and objectives and provide you an update what's happening in our office. Also, obviously lots of things going on and things have been going fast and furious past few weeks and trying to give you an update of where things, we made a lot of progress on a lot of different fronts, but there are still some that are obviously being limited by our COVID limitations and so we're going to continue to do the best we can to work through that prior to next April when the, when the evaluation process is underway. And I think that will do it for me for now. I want to say, hope that everybody continues to have a very safe and, and healthy holiday season. Hope everyone's. Hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. And as we progress in towards, towards the next set of holidays, please be reminded of the fact that, you know, it's better to be safe than sorry during this period of time. If, if you have to postpone major get-togethers with folks till a later time when it's safer to do so, we strongly encourage you to do that. Obviously, a lot of families have seen that the holidays taken on a much different look this year than it has in the past. And we're, we're getting closer to turning that corner, I think, and I do, I truly believe that. And I hope that folks will just remain patient as we get through this, this period of time that's clearly the most concerning and dangerous during the winter, winter months. So again, safe, safe wishes to everyone and stay healthy in the next coming weeks particularly.
Thank you, Bill. Selectmen's update, any comments from any selectmen?
I'd like to just bring up something that happened today. So I had a quick conversation with Christina, a quick conversation with Doc this morning. I had some concerns about the amendments on the agenda and the timing of them. So I went to see Christina, I had popped in to see Bob Cutler. I think the two of them have different interpretations of the rule. I, I had a fear that we might be violating, violating open meeting. And I, my conversation with Doc, I, I understood why he thought it was okay for, for us to hear the presentation tonight from the JCs. The whole thing sounded wonderful. I was very, felt I would be very supportive of it the whole time. I didn't think it was time-sensitive. And then after listening to the presentation tonight, I still feel that it was not time-sensitive. I think we could've heard that presentation at the next meeting and it still would've given them plenty of time. So I just wanna make sure that maybe if, you know, I'm not sure whether it would be Christina, I don't know if it would be you, Bill, Doc is our chair, or whether I would take it upon myself. I mean, I told Christina, I wasn't gonna call the AG's office tonight or today and get clarification. I think it was pretty clear that, you know, two different people have different interpretations of, of what the rule says. As the day went on, I, here's the problem I have, you know, the ruling, you know, says something that wouldn't be reasonably anticipated. So to me, now that I think about it, anybody could come to Christina, come to Doc on a Monday with us and, and anything could be not anticipated. So I, I think maybe something that's time-sensitive might be a reason to throw something on agenda. I just don't feel like today's was. And that's my opinion, okay? Because I, I feel based on, this is something that's gonna take place on Christmas, from Christmas to New Year's. So I just wanna make sure we're doing it the right way and maybe we did. I think maybe, what I'm asking is maybe if we can just get some clarification that how, how we went about it is correct. I don't think there was any ill will. It was not like we were trying to sneak something in or anything like that. But I, I was a little uncomfortable that we may be amended, amended without really having due cause to amend within that 48 hours. So anyhow, I'm just wondering if we can just check into it and, you know, just, just, just see if, if everything was done okay. I mean, we've, we've done it, it, you know, we, I, I think it was unanimous of the board. It was a wonderful presentation and a wonderful thing, especially in this year. I just wanna make sure the, we did it the right way, that's all.
So, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Ultimately, it was my decision. So talking to Christina, talking to Bob Cutler, you know, facing Bill throughout the whole conversation, ultimately it was my decision.
Okay.
And it's the chair's decision, having looked at this, the situation, we're looking at two situations that the board amended for tonight. One of them we haven't gotten to yet, it's under action items, extending the dining in, in Foxborough to March 31st, 2021, which Leah brought up, which was a great point in the fact that the ability for, for outside dining ended November 30th. I was under the impression that it was open-ended. Leah brought up the fact with the wording that it is not, which was a great, great find. And we decided to make an amendment to vote on that action item, which again, wasn't hugely important in the whole scheme of things, other than small business and, and our restaurants. And it was very important to be able, for our restaurants to be able to stay open longer than November 30th. So that sort of falls under doing the right thing.
Time-sensitive.
And, and time-sensitive. The other was sort of, once we were opening up the ability to amend, I felt adding on the JCs was a nice thing to do. It was as simple as that. Having read the, the, my ability to be able to do that, I felt that it was fine for me to, to add that to it. I feel that there was no, absolutely no rub against open meeting laws. There was still plenty of time that the public got to notice that there, there was a amended meeting schedule. And bottom line is, it, it says here, you know, the Attorney General says it's okay so long as the topics are not controversial and may be of particular interest to the public. And, and both of them were. So, you know, certainly it could be read into any way you want. Ultimately, it was my decision. I think I made the right decision in, in both instances. And anybody can certainly consult with the Attorney General at their leisure and see what they say, but that's, that's it. You know, my decision.
Well, and, and while I absolutely respect that, Doc, and, and I'm sure you, you made them for the right decisions, I mean, Bob, I had a discussion with Bob Cutler, he thought it may have been a violation, is what he told me. So my only concern is, I, I respect you as our chair, I respect the reasons why you did it, but if it was a violation, then this whole board is in violation, so.
No, I, I would be me in violation. Because I was the one that, and if anybody wanted to make a, a, you know, put it into the Attorney General, they're more than welcome to do that. But I take full responsibility for what I did today.
Okay, yeah, I mean, like I said, to me it was, I was happy to hear it tonight. I just don't think it was time-sensitive, you know? And, and I'm saying that's my, that's my opinion and, and like I said, I, I've been told that it may have been a violation. I'm not urging anybody to, 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 to make a complaint. I, I just, I'm just wanting us to have good guidance so that we, that if in fact it was, that we try not to do it again. It, this stuff happens all the time, you know? I mean, so it's, it's, it's not that I think it's a big deal by any means. I just, you know, just so we, we try to be.
We always try to be.
That's all.
We always try to be.
I know.
I'm gonna move the agenda. Anybody else under Selectmen's update? Okay, moving on, under action items?
Okay. Um, okay, can I briefly say something about the first action item? Just in case anyone's wondering, Mandarin Chef is good, they're not going anywhere. They're just, I just happened to go in to pick up some food and he just mentioned that at this time they're, they're no longer in need of a liquor license. Just so somebody doesn't hear us saying that he's surrendering, think that they're going under or anything, they're in good shape, so just wanted to throw that in. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept surrendered annual all alcohol beverage license from Lynn &amp; Zoo Inc., DBA Mandarin Chef.
Second?
Any further discussion?
Yeah, under discussion, are they just going to just total takeout or?
Yes.
That's, that's it. Yeah, they, they've decided that, that they've had a fair amount of success with the total takeout approach and that they, they didn't really find that there was, they were doing that much business prior to COVID with, with the alcohol license to begin with. And so they felt that this was probably the best time to do it.
Yeah, basically, he told me that it took a, from the time he let, made it known that he would like a full license, you know, by the time we were able to give him one, a good amount of time went by, he was hoping that his business would go in the direction to have more dine-in. But in the process of it, and then by the time him getting it and then the COVID hitting, and so he's decided to concentrate on, on the takeout aspect.
That was what, two years ago he got that?
Yep.
And he paid five grand, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if he comes back in a year and wants a full liquor license.
You have to do the same thing again.
He knows that, right?
Yep, he's informed.
That's a budding Chris.
I think he told me for, in order, I'm sorry, Leah, I think he told me in order for him to keep the license yearly, he has to pay $3,000.
Yeah, he has to pay the annual renewal.
Yeah, yeah, and so.
How much is that though? That's like 250 bucks, isn't it?
He said, he told me 3,000, but I, I don't know.
It's 2,500 for an all alcohol.
So, so I, I think he feels in, for a whole year he hasn't had any, any business.
Leah?
Just, you know, some feedback along like, like Stephanie's saying, I also went in there a couple of months ago and he mentioned the surrender of the license. And at that time I said, you know, just make sure you talk to your attorney. I think in the past he's used Stopa. So I said, just make sure you talk through it all and think through it all and understand all the impacts. So, you know, it sounded like that was something he's doing. We don't have the actual letter from the Mandarin. I don't know if that came from Mr. Stopa, you know, the, the backup that came in to surrender that license. I was kinda just curious. But I had suggested to him to make sure that he does, you know, just, just speak to his attorney before he moves forward.
Katie, was there a formal surrender letter?
There was not a letter. I had asked two times from Mandarin to submit a formal letter and he just came in and said, you know, he wanted to give these to me. I reviewed with him twice that if he were to surrender and have to go in front of the board, as it is now, and then if he did want to apply for a license in the future, there would first have to be one available and then go through the formal process again and full payment, of course. And he said he did understand. I could certainly reach out to him again if you want a formal letter. I know Christina has a formal letter that should be signed by the board. Should you accept the return of the license? That goes to the ABCC, so that would make it official from the local licensing authority.
Do you have possession of the licenses right now?
We do.
Okay.
It's a renewal, it's a, it's a renewal of the license at this point.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I mean, I don't think you need to have a.
The conversation I had as well, like Leah said, I mean, he, he pretty much, you know, he said just that, he was, he was hoping, and I, I think maybe a couple of years ago or three or four years ago, just in general conversation, he thought maybe he might move to a bigger space and maybe a license would be good for his business and it just didn't pan out that way. So I'm glad Leah at least, you know, I didn't think to, to ask him to, to speak with his attorney, but so, so I, I think he's pretty much aware in what, what he's doing.
I do think we should send something out though in writing, you know, exactly what we're saying now, just to, you know, cross our Ts and dot our Is to make sure that everyone understands it. I don't think it hurts to send him a letter of that sort.
Well, if we vote on it tonight, the letter's a moot point. I mean, you know, so.
Send him a copy of what we send into the ABCC.
Sure.
Leah, are you suggesting we hold off on the, on the vote and send a letter? Or are you suggesting that we, we did, after we vote, we, we send him just what that actually meant? What, what are you suggesting?
I don't think we need to hold anything up. I just think we need to, you know, conversations happen and I don't think it hurts to send anything in writing, just.
So, so I can address that, Leah, if you want. I can, I can write a letter tomorrow indicating that based on the conversation you had with, with Katie in the office on such, such date, notifying us that you would no longer wish to pursue the, pursue the license. The board actually took that under consideration as of tonight's meeting, voted to, to, to accept the license back. And as such, you consider that you, that you no longer have a license as effective as of December 30, December 31st of, of this year.
Yeah, and I believe there was still alcohol in the building, at least when I was in there, so that would be my other question.
I was just gonna ask that.
But the, but the license is still good until the end of this calendar. He is not required to remove it until after the license expires.
Okay, even though he's turned it into us and surrendered it?
Right, he has to, he's, he, well, the license will, his license will effectively expire on December 31st, his current license, and that he will, we will not issue him a new license as of, as of January 1st. So he could actually keep the alcohol in the building until that, till that period is over.
Aren't you supposed to post your liquor license for the public? So if he gave them back.
No, 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 he, he actually has his current license. The renewal license is what we have in possession right now.
Oh, the renewal license, okay, so.
Well, I misunderstood that as well. I thought that he was surrendering effective today. He brought in his license.
So we need to clarify all that up because I thought as of today that he doesn't have a liquor license anymore.
But he, he is required to come before the board, they, the, the action is required to come before the board to indicate that he's officially surrendering, surrendering the license, is why you're at the on it tonight.
Right, but this says surrendering their all alcohol beverage license, so I'm assuming if we.
So the issue is the date, effectively.
Yeah, if, if we vote this and I go in there tomorrow and he's got liquor, then, you know, I'm, I thought we were voting on as of right now.
So, so the.
Do you want, do you want him to be the motion to say as of?
Effective December 31st, correct. Because he's not, he's not looking to surrender.
I say we table this until two weeks.
Bill, sorry. He actually did surrender his 2020 license. He's not open, his dining room is not open. So he.
Okay, all right, I didn't realize that.
Gave me the license that has the date or the year 2020.
He actually gave you a license.
So he should not have the alcohol in on-premise.
Okay, that's a different story then. I didn't understand that.
So you know what, Bill, maybe your letter, just so he knows, so I was in there last week, he's, it's all, he's got.
It's all closed off.
Plastic, plastic up, nobody goes other than just in to pay and pick up your food.
Yeah.
I didn't necessarily look, but I guarantee probably the liquor is on that back wall. He's probably, I would do, maybe just, in your letter, just let him know that he needs to.
Effectively, yeah, he's gonna, he has to remove the alcohol.
Yeah, yeah. I wonder if he just realizes, like, it, it can be there even though he's not serving it, but maybe you could just let him know.
My, 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 I misunderstood. I, I thought that he was actually not looking to renew it as a result.
Yeah.
We went through this with, with Waxy, so what do they have, like 72 hours or something to remove all the alcohol or?
Right.
Yeah.
That would be official as of tonight, so.
Make sure that he understands that we're all on the same page. And I think this is probably a reason why we need to have a letter from him to understand exactly what he's looking to do, to make sure there's no, you know, misunderstandings and to make sure he understands what his requirements are on the other side as soon as he surrenders that for what he has to do.
So I think the question, they go back to Katie, so he actually turned his license into you?
Yes.
Okay. So that actually.
And I've already received a renewal for 2021 and he's not doing an entertainment license and he's not doing, obviously, his, his liquor license because he is going to be strictly takeout only. And he does know, should he open his dining room and want a seven-day entertainment license, he'd have to go in front of the board. So he, he is aware of that.
So he wouldn't, he wouldn't have brought it in if he wasn't interested in, in.
So in, in your letter, just say all alcohol's gotta be removed within 72 hours.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, just so he knows, because he, you know, it's sitting there. He's probably not even thinking he has to actually remove, remove the alcohol.
So we'll clarify that in a letter to him tomorrow indicating that and then also for, send it forthwith back to, notify the, the ABCC accordingly.
You'll make sure that Chief Gray's distracting all this?
Yes. Yeah, we CC him on the, on the letter anyways, notify him.
Okay, so you want to.
Is the board sending the letter today?
Hold on, Leah.
I'm sorry, Leah.
I had some just minor editorial, you know, type of things in the letter. I don't know if the board's signing that tonight or if that's being delayed, but even like, you know, I think the letter should say who it's to, that it's to the ABCC, so.
Right. Okay.
On this license, this is one of the node-specific ones for up there, right?
No, I, I, well, actually, actually, actually it was, he had an all, he had.
We lent him the all big one and then we took it back.
It's right, and we switched it back to the, the one that was node-specific.
Katie, can you confirm that?
I'm pretty sure because I remember when everything was going on with Union Straw and the Legion, that this one was gonna, it was a node-specific license is how I remember it.
That's, you're right.
Node, node-specific.
Because we switched them.
Yes, correct.
We let them go like three months.
He had one that was all-town, which is, which is the rare ones, and, and this was node-specific.
Well, we let them borrow that one until we could get the node-specific ones from the state.
Exactly, exactly right.
All right. Well, great discussion. All those in favor, accepting?
Right.
All right.
Motion to extend outdoor dining in Foxborough until the local state emergency has been lifted and per COVID-19 Order Number 50.
Second? Second.
Under discussion. Sorry, I never know when to chime in when I'm remote. I'm sorry, guys. I just think that the motion should be, should be amended to say temporary outdoor dining regulations.
Yeah.
And there wasn't a copy of them uploaded. It was just something from the state. So will there be a new version that we're signing with a new date on it? Or are we, do we just need the motion, Bill?
I think, I think what you're effectively doing is amending the regulation that you, that, that indicated there was a date specific on it, which was, I think, November 1st, not November 30th, by the way.
It was November 1st. So that's why I think that there should be a draft of that with that change made, and an amendment date on the bottom of that.
Okay.
Then, then uploaded back to the planning board's page. So I, I think it, there needs to be an actual document that's not in board docs.
So, so the act, the action that the board is asking for tonight is to amend it to say that you want, you, you, until, that it will be, remain in force until it is, what's the, what's the word we use?
I have the wording here.
Rescinded.
Yeah, until it's rescinded, until the order is rescinded, correct?
Right.
So is there anything wrong with that language, Leah?
Um, I think it just, I, I think that the language needs to be the same as what's in there. I simply think it's a date swap. It's the honor before the order is, you know, ended or March 31st. And I did make sure I put something in our calendar for March 1st. I hope that we do that, like on Christina or Bill's side too, just so we don't lose sight of this as well.
So, so my, my question is, why would you put a date certain if, if in fact, if the, if the action automatically rescinds once the, the order is, is lifted? That way, you don't have to go back and revisit it?
I think that we need to make an amendment to Page 7, Section H. Right now, it says the temporary program is effective through November 1st, 2020, or until the order is rescinded, whichever is sooner. So I think that just needs to say, the temporary program is effective through March 31st, 2021, or until the order is rescinded, whichever is sooner.
Yeah, what Bill's saying is, why March 31st?
Why set a date?
Why not just until the order is rescinded?
That's the date that you guys had in board docs. That's why I'm not, I'm not.
No, we, okay, so.
Yeah, we have crossed out here. That's why it's crossed out.
We amended that this afternoon to say.
Oh, it's not amended.
Why put a date in there? Because it, because you're going to keep back, coming back to the same thing again in three months, if in fact we're not, we're not at that point. So I guess my point is, is that the document that was up should have said, we just amended this this afternoon to say, it should say no date on it, and just say that, that it gets, it gets amended to say that whenever the order gets rescinded, period.
I think, I don't think there's any harm in revisiting it in March. I, I kind of like a date on it, but.
I mean, that's, that's entirely up to the board.
I personally don't want a date. I don't think we need a date.
No. And I mean, I think, when you really think of it, outdoor dining from December 1st until March 31st, how many places are going to take advantage? But March 31st on, they will. So if, as long as the, the order's still going, I don't think we need a date.
I, but what if Governor Baker rescinds the order? So just, just for discussion. And we want to allow, you know, a restaurant, a Patriot Place, to have a bigger, you know, footprint that it has today, if they have heaters and everything. I don't want it just because.
That's a whole different discussion, I think.
Yeah.
They have to come in front of us with a presentation.
That's right. That's a different discussion. I, and I appreciate what you're trying to get to. But I think that's a discussion about, okay, now we're going to change our, our footprint in terms of where, how we're going to do outdoor dining.
Like Union Straw did.
Correct.
Yeah, it's a whole different, because this is a temporary, we're doing this because of the COVID. What you're talking about is, I think, a whole different discussion.
Can I? So, so that's fine. I think just when I was prepping for the meeting, you know, and I'm not privy to these conversations that are happening, I see March 31st. So that's, you know, what I'm.
That's what I actually see too, so it was never updated.
Right. That was, that would, that should have been changed.
My, 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 Christina gave me has a.
Right. Yeah. So that's the one we, we, we were supposed to amend that this afternoon. So we apologize for that.
So question I have, if, like, say, if a Patriot Place, that, that they've always had outdoor dining, not before COVID, can they, if they wanted to, could they use that in the wintertime? Or was that dated?
Yes.
No, they could, as long as they had it.
They could have used, if they had it before.
But it was, we allowed them to expand it.
It's just that the, the places that we okay to do outdoor dining.
I mean, that didn't normally.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we just.
A restaurant that has an approved patio could have gone bigger, for example, during this order.
So, so just to get back to your point, Leah, and, and the reason why it wasn't, it was actually listed as March 31st. And I, I said, well, and then I, I said, we, we had the conversation, why do we need a date at this point? Because it really, we're just going to keep, keep going until the governor rescinds the order anyways. And once he rescinds it, then that, that issue comes, becomes non-existent anyways. So I think.
I mean, we forgot it expired November 1st. And I just think it keeps our finger on the pulse. I mean, I'm fine with it either way. I get what you're saying, but we already missed this once. And, you know, to have the date in here and revisit it March 1st, I don't think is necessarily a bad thing. But, you know, I'll go along with whatever the board wants to do on that.
So as, 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 just reread it?
Reread it, just as we have it here.
Correct. We'll effectively amend the regulations to say the same.
It's temporary, because it is for specifically temporary outdoor dining.
Okay.
Right.
Motion to extend temporary outdoor dining in Foxborough until the local state of emergency has been lifted and per COVID-19 Order Number 50.
Second.
Okay. With, yeah. All right. And all in favor?
Aye. Okay, great. Good. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve the July 21st, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, one, one other thing. We got to make sure, as, as Leah said, that that's amended in, in, in the regulation, the draft for the planning board, right? Leah?
Yeah. So we need to actually go in, and it's, it's Section H on the last page. We need to remove that date, and then just put an amended date on the bottom of that.
Right. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. All right.
Yep.
And then we have motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, everybody. Good night, Leah.
Do the minutes.
Thank you.
Do the minutes.